In the face of all of our tragedies, we wonder sometimes where is God?
What is happening in the black community is all this violence directed at us. Nobody was really sure what was happening. You know, a couple of kids, that's just a murder. Five kids, wait a minute. Ten kids, 12 kids. As it built, you could feel the anxiety building with people because this constant in the life of black people of vulnerability, that at any moment you could be stolen. That's deep in our psyche, that we come from stolen people. We know people who have been stolen in our family legacy. And so the thought of children being stolen right in front of their house, right in their own community, walking home from school, from this neighborhood store. It was hard to even process emotionally, you know, in the black mecca city of Atlanta.
In the community, there was a lot of frustration around the child murders. And it really came to a head with the October 1980 explosion at the daycare center in Bowen Homes.
10:22 on October 13th, an explosion with a force of 75 sticks of dynamite ripped the roof off the daycare center. So do you have children in there?
Yeah.
Who?
I got nieces, I got about nine nieces in there.
The Bowen Home explosion, I was, I was laying in my bed and this is daycare and this is my apartment. So it shook my whole bed, it shook the whole apartment.
There were five people dead, four of them children, the fifth being a teacher.
The first ambulance to arrive held six-year-old Ramita Morland critically injured with a depression fracture in her skull. From then, it was a horrifying parade of small injured children. The black community was panicked. Nine children in Atlanta were already murdered. Now this.
There was a sense that the community was under attack.
Can you confirm how many were dead, sir?
There are five confirmed dead.
How does this happen?
People felt someone had planted a bomb. Other people thought the Klan had come in. Everyone assumed that there was a plot to kill mass numbers of black children.
There was a group of people very angry who insisted this was deliberate. I called the mayor and he came.
There was still smoke coming from the daycare center, what was left of it, debris scattered around. You had all of these mothers and relatives of these children who attended the daycare center. And in the middle of all this, Maynard Jackson with a megaphone trying to quell this crowd. Maynard Jackson had no answers at the time, other than to say that they could count on the fact that there would be more investigation.
I want you to know, we will not rest until we turn every stone to find the reason for this, which at this point appears to be an accident. What else?
There was a sense of questioning whether there was, you know, the competence of the people who were in charge.
Our fire and police officials have told us, the only evidence we have at this time indicates that this was an accident. Just a minute, just a minute.
Everyone was so hysterical, so that when Maynard came, it was almost as if a sea of people wanted to attack him.
I know the frustration feel, I feel the same frustration. Just a minute, just a minute. That's the God's truth.
To blame him for what had happened. This could have turned into a riot, because people were that angry. The mayor was painted with a broad brush as caring more for the city and its image than caring about the black children.
I know you're in a bad spot, but that's the price you pay when you're on the other side.
The Bowen Homes thing was the landmark in this struggle, because it really showed the divide between the community and the political leadership, the elected political leadership.
I don't know exactly what happened at Bowen Homes. They said a boiler blew up, but Bowen Homes and the explosion at the daycare center there really acted as a catalyst, because all of a sudden, it brought together the message of the child murders being you are powerless. It is you are powerless when these young people are being abducted one by one and taken out. And now, look, we can just come in and blow up your babies.
When the Bowen Home things happened, that's the closest it got to, okay, now this is gonna get bad.
City too busy to hate? So slow.
Hysterical, keep that term in mind, context of white supremacy. Gus T. Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, June 9, 2022. So I have been told, this is our fourth study session on Catherine Pellinero's Absolute Madness, detailing the butchering, killing of black males in Buffalo, New York State at large in the 1980s. We're picking up, now specifically, we're picking up in the middle of chapter six. Again, these chapters are organized by date, we're moving chronologically. So chapter six is October 8 through October 19. We left off last week, speaking of hysterical, Pellinero, she quoted Ed Cosgrove. So he's gonna come out, give a press conference in Buffalo and talk about, they said, started first 20 minutes of the press conference is, hey, now, we got all these no-count divisive, self-serving black people in build, coming out here talking about, we got conspiracies and all this other nonsense attacking black people. He spends the first 20 minutes castigating the black people before he gets into the details. And oh yes, by the way, in addition to having not solved the murders of the four black males in September, now we have the murders of Parler Edwards and Ernest Jones, and their hearts were carved out. And we haven't solved that murder either, but it's definitely not KKK or white supremacists related. There's no conspiracy out for the black people. That's where we ended at last week. And I thought it was important, again, Gus T. has a history degree, and again, we started when the cows came back on the air in 2009, with the so-called Atlanta Child Murders. I had an entirely different audio segment prepared. I was gonna start with the CBS five-part mini-series in 1985. James Earl Jones, we were just talking about him, Star Wars, right? He's in this mini-series, as is Morgan Freeman, and specifically, the point where they talk about the Bowen Homes explosion in this dramatization mini-series, they lead up to it asking a question about Detlinger, because he had been investigating privately, even though he is a former enforcement officer, privately, and connecting the dots, as they say, that, hey, I think these murders of these young people, black people, are connected, might be the same person doing all of this. The police were saying that that is not the case early on. Instead, I played a segment from the documentary Sam Pollard. He worked with Spike Lee on many films, including Do the Right Thing. His documentary with HBO, which is like a five or six-part series, Atlanta's Missing and Murdered, The Lost Children. I do think it's great that the title is Atlanta's Missing and Murdered, as opposed to Atlanta Child Murders and all that, talked about that before. But interestingly, at least the amount that I've seen thus far, and I have to watch the entire series, but they do not mention Buffalo in the part that I have talked about. And at least at this point, if they did it chronologically, at the same time as the Bowen Home explosion, the killings in Buffalo were happening. That's what I mean about keeping all of this in context, if we're gonna talk about black people's response. There are two quick reports that I wanna share, cuz I think they're so important and just discussing, even thinking about why so many black people don't remember the Buffalo killings. This is report number one. This is titled, "The Explosion's Aftermath." Before I even get to that, I just wanna give you the dictionary definition for hysterical, the adjective deriving from or affected by uncontrolled extreme emotion. Next, relating to or affected with hysteria, that's like a medical condition, right? So that's hysterical. All right, so the report that we're gonna read, "The Explosion's Aftermath," this is from the Atlanta Constitution, October 19, 1980. "The aftermath of the tragic explosion at Bowen Homes affects all of us in the Atlanta community. The true grief, of course, rests with the families of the children and the one adult killed in that explosion. Most of us in the overall community grieve too. Nothing should alter that focus of sympathy and sorrow relating to the immediate families and friends and neighbors of those who died. Yet beyond that immediate concern, there are a number of more general community concerns." This column relates to just one, namely, the psychological impact of the explosion on many black Atlanta citizens. Many assumed initially that the explosion had to be deliberate, not an accident. Some people declared at once that the Ku Klux Klan must have been behind the deaths. Others thought at once of the deaths of other black children, those children murdered over the past 15 months in Atlanta, apparently systematically, perhaps all by the same person or persons. It is important for all of us, black and white, to try to understand why this psychological impact was so heartfelt. Consider some of the incidents that have been in the news over the country in fairly recent times. In Miami, a black insurance executive was beaten to death by police, according to testimony from police at the trial. The acquittals of the officers involved was preface to three days of terrible rioting in Miami. When it was over, there were 16 dead. In Buffalo, New York, six black men have been killed in recent days, apparently simply because they were black. In a couple of cases, their hearts were cut out. Members of the Ku Klux Klan have been on trial in Greensboro, North Carolina, on charges of killing five people in a shootout within the city. Klansmen were recently on trial and acquitted in Chattanooga, Tennessee, on charges of shooting five black women. There have been news reports, including some on network television, of members of the Ku Klux Klan training in special secret camps with machine guns and other weapons, and talking of a likely race war to come. If they were black, they would be under the jail, asserted Mayor Maynard Jackson. That may be an exaggeration, but the mayor's point is probably accurate. There probably would be considerably more public expression of outrage, more public hue and cry, if there were reports of black militant groups training with automatic weapons and talking about shooting white people. One stunning perception emerged in the aftermath of the Bowen Homes explosion. There is some sense of paranoia in the black community, but not paranoia at all when you relate it, the kinds of incidents that have occurred over the country in recent days. But the more shocking perception for many of us is the notion that a great many people in the black community believe that their white neighbors just plain really don't care much if black children are murdered. That is not true. But the perception is real, and it is a perception that can be faced and changed only by starting with the realization that it exists. One more quickly, and then we'll move forward. Now again, now keep in mind, all of that happened at the same time, October 1980, when black people talk about they don't remember these events, even though they lived through them. The other report, this is also from the Atlanta Constitution, this is from October 15, 1980. So this is two days after the Bowen Homes explosion. The article is titled, "The Tragedy Lingers: Some Bowen Homes Residents Insist Nursery Explosion Was No Accident." Kenneth Thomas and a handful of fellow Bowen Homes residents were mulling the previous day's tragedy at 1:00 PM Tuesday, when the warming afternoon stillness was shattered by further sounds of emergency. Thomas and his friends were engaged in a one-sided debate as to the cause of the Columbus Day explosion of a boiler at the Gate City Day Nursery. While officials believe the blast occurred because of a faulty safety mechanism, Thomas echoed the sentiments of those present when he insisted, "I don't think it was a bomb. I know it was a bomb." As he spoke, four fully-equipped hook-and-ladder fire trucks suddenly howled down Wilkes Circle and killed their sirens in front of the A.D. Williams Grammar School directly across the street from the ill-fated daycare center. Thomas, who less than 24 hours earlier had awakened to find bricks raining from the skies over his neighborhood moments after the boiler exploded in the hallway of the daycare center, joined dozens of neighbors called from their homes Tuesday by the too familiar screech of fire sirens. Within minutes of the truck's arrival, the Bowen Homes housing project again experienced the frenzy and frustration of the previous day, when four children and one of their teachers were killed. Mothers ran from their apartments through the barracks-like complex, shouting to children playing near the school, "Get away, you kids stay away from there." Little boys shouted, "Boom," before being hustled away by worried mothers. 10 minutes later, a police helicopter landed and a SWAT team unit arrived as parents of A.D. Williams students rushed to the scene to check on the safety of schoolchildren, threatened by what authorities insisted was a false bomb scare. School principal E.C. Norman said, "We're not allowed to talk to the press, but somebody called in a false fire alarm. This school has been checked thoroughly, but kids will be scared to come to school if they keep this up." Teachers confirmed that attendance was way off on Tuesday. One said, "We've got some kids, but a lot didn't show up." Young men rode through the complex in their shiny cars, a warm, sun-dried wash hanging on lines, and delivery trucks made their usual rounds. If not for sirens, uniformed officers, a second-day swarm of media representatives, and a lawyer investigating Monday's incident for one of the bereaved families, a nervous calm might have returned to the area. Speaking of Monday's disaster, 22-year-old Thomas remembered, "I thought somebody had run a car into the building, but the explosion sent Thomas running from his apartment. I ran out and saw bricks in the air still coming down," Thomas said Tuesday. "They're trying to fool us that it was the boiler," Donald Gray said to Miss Thomasina Grimes as the two neighbors stood on the rise overlooking the school as A.D. Williams students and teachers evacuated the building Tuesday. Despite assurances from school and fire officials that a false alarm had been called in to the Fire Bureau, residents were visibly angered by what they considered to be a further indication that foul play was the cause of the Columbus Day disaster. "I took my girl out of school. I wouldn't let her go today," Mrs. Grimes said. "My kids will grow up illiterate before I allow them back into that school or any other," Gray said. "I got two kids in there. I had two in the nursery. A police officer told me yesterday that they've been getting bomb threats against this neighborhood for the past two weeks." Why was nothing said? Why did they allow us to send our children in there knowing that? I want to ask Public Safety Commissioner Lee Brown, black male. Would he bring his children here to these schools?" demanded Gray. Police have given no indication of bomb threats made against the neighborhood during the past two weeks. 26-year-old Vanessa James, mother of two children, Dante, five, and Senquida, four, said, "I'm going to keep them home. I'm going to keep them home with me." Mrs. James said both her children attended the daycare center Monday. All he, Dante, said was, "My teachers dead. My teachers dead." "It shattered the windows and blew the vent out," said Mrs. James, who lives a block from the site of the explosion. Some families tried to maintain a semblance of normality. Mrs. Cynthia Middlebrooks prepared taffy apples as she talked about the tragedy. "Her daughter Nikita's ears hurt Monday. They hurt again Tuesday. She usually loves to play outside. Now she won't go outside at all," said Mrs. Middlebrooks, whose three-year-old daughter and son Franklin Cloud, five, were both in the Gate City Day Nursery when it exploded Monday. "My school blew up," Franklin Cloud said. Mrs. Barbara Cherry, the children's grandmother, said, "I put my robe on and ran up the street when I heard the explosion. I usually don't go out in my housecoat. Somehow, I knew it was the center. I didn't smell no gas. I didn't see no smoke. I didn't see nothing. When I got there, I saw a little boy with his fingers cut off lying there. I thought I was going to find my grandchildren dead." The Reverend W.L. Cherry, father of two A.D. Williams students, set himself up as spokesman for several parents when he told school officials, "I'm not going to let my children go in there. We're not going to have this. We want the truth. We're not going to put up with this. We think the city is hiding something. We think the mayor is covering up the truth. We figure it was a bomb, and nothing they've said has made us think different. We have three people who say they saw three or four men out there behind the school at 4:00 AM the morning the school blew up. If we have to march from here to Washington, D.C., we're going to find out what happened." Willie Drury, 31, said that at 4:00 AM Monday morning, he saw three white men in two cars, one a 74 white Plymouth and a 76 Dodge was parked at the back of the center near the door. They were picking at the back door. They had two tool bags. One of the guys had long brown hair to his shoulders, and the other two had hats covering blond hair sticking out. A second Bowen Homes resident, James Tillman, said he also saw white men at the rear door of the center early Monday morning. Drury said he tried to give statements to the police Monday following the explosion. Drury said he told four different police before any officials took his statements. "The first thing, I heard the explosion and ran out the door. I said to my brother, 'Those white boys did it.'" End of the report, again, the Bowen Homes explosion from October 13, 1980, the connection between Georgia and New York throughout this tragedy. We will get started, context of white supremacy, absolute madness, audio segment one.
Edward Cosgrove now found himself in the unenviable position of having to release some very frightening details of these two grotesque murders. The press had their ways and sources, and would find out anyway, particularly with the number of persons privy to the crime scenes and those with glimpses of information, and he had to do so without instilling further fear. The truth, bad as it was, seemed preferable to the rumors and conjecture that could crop up if the public perceived a lack of candor. Better to reveal the grim facts now while officials were still a step ahead of the rumor mill. The key here was to simultaneously impart a measure of reassurance for the public, some clear sign that law enforcement was quite literally on the case, or cases, responding en masse, and on the road to making arrests. He called a press conference for that morning. Prior to speaking to the media, Cosgrove spoke extensively with others, heads of local law enforcement, the FBI, and David Brown, chief counsel to New York Governor Hugh Carey. Some key decisions and plans were made. In the first of four press conferences he would hold in the hallway outside his office that day, Edward Cosgrove confirmed that the body of another murdered black man had been found by the Niagara River, and that there were definite links between this homicide and the murder of Parler Edwards the day before. He revealed that the hearts of both victims had been cut out, and in both instances, the heart removal appeared to have been done by someone who knew what they were doing, although not necessarily medically trained. Perhaps someone with a knowledge of hunting. The weapon that was used to make what Cosgrove described as the long horizontal slashes on the chests of the victims had not yet been recovered, nor had the missing hearts. "The four September 22 caliber murders are not related to the two homicides uncovered yesterday and today," he said. "There is no evidence in any way to connect them." Noting the vast differences, Cosgrove said he didn't believe that the mutilation murders were the work of the 22 caliber killer, changing his modus operandi. "These latest murders appeared to have been the work of a deranged, mentally disturbed person," he said, "although this is merely conjecture on my part. The only similarity was that all six victims were black males." He added that there was no evidence of Ku Klux Klan or neo-Nazi involvement in any of the deaths. At most, he thought, the 22 caliber killer may have set off some deranged person. At most, he thought, the twenty-two caliber killer may have set off some deranged person. Many in law enforcement agreed that the shootings and cabbie murders were not connected. For one thing, multiple weapons had been used on Edwards and Jones. Multiple weapons in a street slaying almost invariably meant multiple assailants. There were also a number of police who thought the twenty-two caliber killer had left the area by now. Cosgrove continued releasing information throughout the day. He told the assembled media he had requested that the FBI take a more active role in the investigation and was awaiting word from Washington. A special agent from the Buffalo FBI office meanwhile told reporters that the agency was analyzing all of the cases for possible violations of civil rights laws, which he said was still a key requisite for full FBI involvement. Governor Carey had pledged the full cooperation of the state police. The governor had ordered the dispatch of BCI personnel from around the state to Western New York, including five black officers. The major announcement was the establishment of a command post in the office of the district attorney. A task force of more than a hundred police officers chosen from the various agencies had been consolidated into an investigative team, of which the district attorney would be in charge. "I've assumed control of this investigation," Cosgrove said. "I've taken the responsibility of carrying this forward. The investigation of all these homicides is going to be conducted by me, with the New York State Police directing, with the assistance of all the police departments involved." The authority for this had come directly from Governor Carey. Ed Cosgrove would later say that his decision to take charge had been crucial and carried the twofold purpose of solving the murders and preventing all-out racial warfare. The investigation needed leadership and direction. An army of police from separate jurisdictions, some would say competing jurisdictions, were working on the cases. Every army needed a general. The investigation also needed a face, a single individual with authority to whom the community could turn for information and assurance. Optics were as important as the investigative work. As District Attorney of Erie County, Ed Cosgrove was the region's de facto chief law enforcement official. The command post had been put together swiftly but efficiently. Rules of order had been written and a chain of command established. Naming himself, as he had at yesterday's press conference, as the sole source of information with respect to the investigation, Cosgrove further outlined the hierarchy. Major George R. Tordy of the State Police was in charge of the police aspects of the investigation. Directly under him were Captain Henry Williams of the State Police BCI and Chief Leo Donovan of the Buffalo Homicide Squad. The command post had a dedicated space within the district attorney's office. At a cost of one thousand dollars, new telephone lines had been installed to facilitate communication with officers who would be working around the clock on the investigation. There was also a dedicated hotline for information from the public. The late edition of the Buffalo Evening News featured Cosgrove's statements in an article below the front page fold, following related stories on the murders beneath the bold headline, "Two Black Murder Victims Mutilated." Top center was a large photograph of police and morgue attendants carrying the latest victim, Ernest Jones, though he was not yet identified in the press, on a gurney. The entire front page for Thursday, October ninth, was dedicated to coverage of the murders. Among the prominent articles was one in which Assemblyman Arthur O. Eve and the Reverend Charlie H. Fisher of Build appealed for blacks to remain calm but take heed. "No one should travel unless they travel with someone else," Mr. Eve was quoted. Mr. Fisher said the latest murders have put the black community in a state of emergency and likewise advised that people stay calm and not go out alone. According to the newspaper, Arthur Eve cited a variety of incidents that appeared to be due to the efforts of an organized group to physically and verbally harass black citizens. He encouraged people to report all such occurrences to the police. Eve also made a plea for the Buffalo Police Benevolent Association to stop its unofficial slowdown and demonstrate to the black community that they are concerned for its welfare. This was a reference to the current contract negotiations going on in the department. Ed Cosgrove had made a similar comment about Buffalo police being hampered by fiscal and labor problems that prevented them from fully complementing the task force. Police Commissioner James Cunningham responded that there had been no slowdown in the homicide investigations and that detectives were working overtime on the cases. Another article featured the theories of a university at Buffalo psychology professor that the killer in the mutilations was a bigot and sadist and that the twenty-two caliber killer was likely a separate individual, paranoid and acting out of delusion. "It was conceivable," he thought, "that all the publicity could spawn imitators and more killings. The murders were no longer just a local story. The prospect of a serial killer had already drawn interest from reporters and journalists beyond Western New York, intrigued all the more because the killings were happening in the same time period as the Atlanta child murders and the cross-country spree of racist assassin Joseph Paul Franklin. With the nightmarish murders of the cabbies seeming more like something straight out of a horror movie than real life, the story attracted even greater attention. New faces appeared at the press conferences, turning out headlines, stressing the urgency, drawing parallels with crimes against blacks in other parts of the country, both contemporary and historical. While some journalists stuck to straight reporting, others indulged in theory and speculation, often of the alarming variety. As journalist Jonathan Mahler would eventually write in retrospect about media coverage of the Son of Sam case, the frenzied coverage fanned the growing sense of fear. The growing sense of fear fanned the frenzied coverage. Son of Sam had been a more typical serial killer, choosing victims of his own race, mainly targeting women. The Buffalo killings had the provocative twist of apparently being racially motivated, a point repeated over and over, often along with cautionary comments of those who viewed this as an epidemic rather than an aberrant series of murders, unsolved because authorities were indifferent to the suffering of blacks. The three network affiliate TV stations in Buffalo made the crimes the focus of their broadcasts throughout the day, breaking in with live coverage from the press conferences and footage of police clustered at the crime scenes. In between were recaps, community reactions, and experts opining on what was going through the killer's mind. There were the inevitable comparisons with David Berkowitz, who was serving his six-life sentences at the Attica Correctional Facility thirty-some miles outside of Buffalo. Channel Seven enhanced their interview with a psychiatric expert by showing a photo of Berkowitz in the background. A second piece on Berkowitz informed viewers that the Attica inmate had lost his Social Security Disability benefits. The only purpose of this minor story, which again featured a photo of the notorious murderer, seemed to be to keep the specter of serial murder alive, or perhaps to warn would-be killers that they might be putting their Social Security benefits at risk. The big topic was the mutilation of the cab drivers, which drew comparisons with Jack the Ripper. Some reporters were particularly vivid, telling viewers that the attacker ripped out the hearts of his victims. One anchor referred to the cab drivers as "the Ripper victims," while another newscaster declared there might be "not one but two crazed murderers on the loose in Western New York." A promo for a late newscast had an anchor tag the big story, "Hunting the Hacky Hacker." While all the stations noted Cosgrove's statements that the two killings were not linked to the previous four, some tied them together by observing that all six homicides were being investigated as one. An investigative reporter for Channel Two attempted to connect the murders to black killings nationally, raising the possibility of "a national conspiracy against blacks." Amid the plethora of coverage and commentary, the one detail that resonated far and wide was that the two cabbies' hearts had been carved out. Unfortunately, no one had thought to tell the family of Parler Edwards about this detail ahead of time. One of his daughters said later that the family learned of it when they heard about it on TV. The sensational news spurred a great deal of action. Community and activist groups held emergency meetings. Daniel Acker sent a telegram to Governor Hugh Carey asking him to send the National Guard. Buffalo Mayor James D. Griffin and Reverend Bennett Smith appeared on television together that evening, appealing for the community to remain calm, reminding viewers that Buffalo was the city of good The night of Thursday, October ninth, was harrowing. The violence began in the late afternoon and went on throughout the early hours of the morning. A shot was fired at a Buffalo Fire Department dispatcher as he drove to work. The bullet hit his car. A man walking on a street nearby was attacked by four men. He was beaten but not robbed. Two men pulled up alongside a man stopped at the intersection of Broadway and Fillmore Streets and shattered the driver's side window of his car before speeding off. The victim was treated for facial cuts at a local hospital. Other motorists had rocks hurled at their cars, shattering windows and lights. In the most serious incident reported, a young couple sitting in a parked car was approached by two men who said they were Narcotics Squad detectives. One carried a billy club, the other a gun. When the men failed to produce badges, the couple attempted to flee. The police imposters fired two shots through the rear window of the car before running off. All the attacks were unprovoked. All happened on the east side. The victims were white, the perpetrators black. "It is probably not prudent for whites to wander into the black neighborhoods at night right now," a police officer at the Genesee Street Station told a reporter. "The paranoia on the east side is very widespread. The tension is so thick you can cut it with a knife." The most jarring incident was the burning cross that scorched the night sky. Twelve feet high, wrapped in old clothing and rags that had been doused with gasoline, the makeshift wooden cross had been propped against a street sign and set ablaze at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Brunswick Street, in what a reporter called "the heart of the city's black community." It had not burned for long, though. Two police officers had spotted it immediately and knocked it to the ground. As they summoned the fire department, a black man across the street shouted to them, "Leave it burn! Call Channel Seven and get the cameras down here." Another black man raced up in a car and took two flash pictures of the officers with the cross. Police Captain Floyd J. Edwards was the commander of the Cold Springs Station. Captain Edwards, who was African-American, filed a report on the cross burning with Commissioner Cunningham. "In the opinion of this captain," Edwards wrote, "because of the size of the cross and the circumstances regarding this incident, the possibility that white people would have put up the cross without being seen by anyone is very remote." Less than ten minutes before they found the burning cross, Edwards reported, two of his officers had passed by the intersection on their way to another call on Brunswick Avenue. The cross had not been there, but the officers had noticed a group of six young black males standing in a circle. Driving back past the intersection just minutes later, they had spotted the enormous cross on fire. The six black youths were gone. "In light of recent newspaper and television coverage of the twenty-two caliber killer and the Ripper, who knifed two black men to death," Captain Edwards wrote, "the officers feel that this incident was done only to get the black neighborhood up in arms." Some black teens admitted their responsibility for the prank soon afterward, but photos of the charred cross had already gone out over news wires, presumably as the work of white supremacists. The staged cross burning was particularly vexing to police officers like Clifton Jones and Danny Owens, both of whom were black. Officers Jones and Owens wanted to form a task force of black officers to help not only with the investigation of the killings, but to help keep peace in the black community and prevent further incendiary acts. Staunching the tide of vigilantism was of even greater concern. "Some of the blacks are starting to retaliate," Officer Jones told a reporter. "Our big worry is that some innocent white people are going to get hurt." Pervasive fear, blind rage, and acts of agitation like the cross burning had elevated the situation to crisis levels. The change in atmosphere was palpable. "This isn't the same city of Buffalo we knew one month ago." Precinct twelve had received a number of calls from black citizens asking how to obtain pistol permits. Officer Jones had already noticed more people carrying guns on the street. Speaking of the smaller crimes and malevolence that the wave of murders had spawned, a veteran police officer cautioned, "There are a lot of crazy people, both white and black, who will use a situation like this to their advantage." Reverend Bennett Smith said that some black men had purchased guns, perhaps illegally, because they would rather have the police catch them with an illegal gun than for the murderer to catch them without it. The cross burning and overnight attacks were given prominent coverage in the newspapers on Friday, October tenth, along with a lengthy article on the front page of the Buffalo Evening News about a black autoworker who had come forward and told the news that two white men had tried to kill him on October first. Police Commissioner James Cunningham personally questioned the autoworker after reporters from the news brought him to police headquarters. The fifty-nine-year-old autoworker, whose name was not released because, per the news, he was regarded as a potential witness to the twenty-two caliber killer and mutilation murders, said that as he was driving home from work around eleven the night of October first, he had been followed by two white men in a beat-up blue Chevy van, who got in front of his small car and refused to allow him to pass. After some jockeying on the road, the van headed him off and a club-wielding white man jumped out and shouted, "I'll kill you, nigger!" The white man, who the victim said had to be a lunatic, beat on the autoworker's car with the club. When the victim rolled down his window and asked the attacker why he wanted to kill him, the man responded by punching him in the eye. He continued slamming the club against the car and spewing racial epithets, prodding the man to get out of his car. The autoworker said he had been afraid to get out and fight back because he noted that the white man wore a pouch over his right thigh that would have held a weapon. He thought the assailant might be the twenty-two caliber killer. The other white man was still in the van, who sat there and watched. Several people had run outside during the commotion, which had happened near the intersection of Hurdle Avenue and Military Road in Buffalo. The witnesses backed up the autoworker's account. The assailant was described as a short, stocky, hippie-like guy in his mid-twenties or thirties with long fair hair, wearing a baseball cap. According to the Buffalo Evening News, Commissioner Cunningham said the autoworker gave information that matched what police had already gathered in the murder investigation, including the description of the vehicle. The commissioner had the autoworker speak with homicide detectives and ordered a roundup of the witnesses to his assault. The news described this account as "the first tenuous shred of evidence that appeared to link the twenty-two caliber killings of four and the mutilation of two others, all blacks," though it was unclear what this link might be. The state police were investigating an incident on October fifth that victims feared might also be the work of the twenty-two caliber killer. A black bus driver had been injured on the thruway, possibly by gunfire. Paul Oberle was driving members of the choir of Saint John Baptist Church from Buffalo to Syracuse when a small projectile shattered the lower-left windshield of the bus. The incident had occurred eighty miles east of Buffalo on Interstate ninety. A small fragment of metal was removed from Oberle's neck at a hospital in Syracuse, where he was treated for cuts on his arm and neck from the flying glass. Captain Henry Williams of the State Police BCI said it appeared that the shot came from a small caliber weapon, possibly a twenty-two caliber, if in fact it had been a gunshot. The fragment recovered was too small to ascertain whether it was part of a bullet. The state police could only confirm that it was a piece of metal, but were investigating the incident as a possible shooting. Captain Williams noted that a shot would have to have been fired from a wooded area northeast of the thruway and crossed- and crossed the westbound lane before hitting the bus, which was traveling eastbound. It seems doubtful that anyone could have passed the bus and set up in a position to shoot at it. Small game season had begun October first, and the possibility of a bullet ricochet from a hunter had to be considered also. The state police had questioned people in the area, none of whom recalled seeing any suspicious persons or vehicles. Troopers wanted to speak with a black man who told the Reverend Bennett Smith that he had been traveling in his own car behind the bus when another car carrying two white men and a white woman had tried to force him off the road a few minutes before the bus driver was injured. Smith told reporters that the man had given the car's license plate number to police on the night of the occurrence, but Captain Williams said he had been unable to find any officer who may have been given the number. The twenty-two caliber killer had become the boogeyman. The elusive blond gunman had taken on an almost phantom-like status in the minds of many, feared as the culprit behind every strange occurrence, every threat, or menacing act. Jesse Jackson arrived in Buffalo on Friday, October tenth. The Reverend Jackson had come at the request of local civil rights leaders in order to help calm the community. He spoke to a crowd of more than eight hundred people on that Friday night at the Build Town Hall. Some off-duty black police officers provided security on their own time because the Build office reported receiving a death threat to Jackson from an anonymous caller. Jackson invoked the name of slain civil rights leader Dr. Martin Luther King as he warned against responding to the murders with violence and retribution, encouraging the community instead to exercise civil power and focus on the larger situation rather than just the current wave of homicides. "Sure, we're going to demand to find out who killed six people," the Reverend Jackson told the mostly-black audience. "But there's more. We can't just worry about those who killed six men. What about those who killed our dreams? What about those who leave us unemployed? What about those who leave us in slum housing? We don't have to fight fire with fire. We don't have to fight lives with lives. We don't have to fight hate with hate. We must change our minds, then change people's minds about us," Jackson said in a rising voice. "There's nothing in the world more powerful than a made-up mind." The crowd responded with enthusiasm as Jackson continued, "We've got ten million votes to fight with. We must get mad enough and get smart enough to go to the polls and retire some people." He warned that resorting to violence would be suicidal for blacks. "Beware of anybody who tries to define your manhood as getting a gun and getting revenge," Jackson said. "There they are with all those guns and police and investigators and judges. Here we are with women with children and no husbands, trapped in a neighborhood where they can turn the lights out and turn the gas off and pull the supermarkets out. Don't fall for no funny definitions," the Reverend Jackson continued. "Don't drop no vote and pick up no stick, no gun. There's power in that vote, power." Speaking of the murders, he told the audience, "If we have political power, we can demand the district attorney to take action. If we have political power, we can demand the Department of Justice to take action." Jackson said it was important for the community to come together in the crisis across all racial and political lines, but added that if the killer was not apprehended within a reasonable amount of time, then we've got to march in the community where the killers are. Drawing to a close, the preacher declared, "I am somebody, I am!" And the crowd shouted back in unison, "Somebody!" Jackson ended his passionate forty-minute speech by leading the assembly in singing, "We Shall Overcome." Earlier in the day, Jesse Jackson had appeared on a televised meeting and panel discussion hosted at Channel Seven Studios, along with local religious, political, and civic leaders to discuss the rash of murders. In addition to Jackson, the panel included Erie County Executive Edward Radkowski, Raphael Dubard of the NAACP, Erie County Sheriff Kenneth Braun, Fletcher Graves of the Justice Department, Earl Clark of Build, and the Reverend Bennett Smith. Jackson and some other panelists criticized Buffalo Mayor James Griffin, District Attorney Edward Cosgrove, and Police Commissioner James Cunningham for not attending the meeting. Jackson said that their attendance would have represented a presence of assurance. "We need the complete moral force of the white community," Jackson stated. He added that the black community had lost confidence in local authorities because blacks are under the impression that the cops aren't doing enough to apprehend the killer or killers. Following the televised meeting, Jesse Jackson and the other panelists proceeded to Cosgrove's office, where they met for ninety minutes with the district attorney, Buffalo City Council President Delmar Mitchell, who was acting mayor because Griffin was out of state on a pre-planned trip, and Councilman David Collins and James Pitts. Councilmen Collins and Pitts were both African-American and represented districts that were largely populated by blacks. Ed Cosgrove had not attended the panel because he had been on a state police helicopter viewing the crime scenes with Leo Donovan and Lieutenant Sam Slade. Returning from the flight, Cosgrove told reporters that the killer of the cab drivers must have been very familiar with the sites where the bodies were discovered because the areas were not very accessible and the murderer therefore had to know where he was going. The presence of the Reverend Jackson was not the only major news of the day. Reports were coming in of yet another extraordinary attack on a black male. At three thirty PM, a nurse had interrupted an attempted strangulation of a patient on the seventh floor of the Erie County Medical Center on Buffalo's east side. The victim was Colin Cole, age thirty-seven, who was in the hospital's detoxification unit. A nurse passing by Cole's room had noticed the door to his room was closed. She opened it and saw a white male crouched over the patient who was on the floor. The white man said to the nurse, "He's fallen and hurt himself," before rushing past her and out the door. Ed Cosgrove spoke to the press at ten forty-five PM that night to confirm the news. A white male had choked Colin Cole with a ligature and then escaped from the hospital. Cole would likely have been killed if the nurse had not interrupted the attack. Cole received severe injuries to his neck and was in serious condition following emergency surgery. Before lapsing into unconsciousness, Cosgrove said, "Cole told hospital security that the white man had said, 'I hate niggers,' before strangling him in his bed." Referring to Colin Cole as the seventh victim in the string of attacks on black men, Cosgrove said that the nurse and several witnesses described the strangler as about thirty years old, five feet two to five feet four, with blond hair. Cosgrove said it appeared to be the same maniac responsible for the twenty-two caliber killings, stating that the nurse had given a very good description of the assailant and that her information jives with the information we already have. Cosgrove said that a massive manhunt was underway. "It is my belief with the intense effort we have ongoing that we will stop this maniac." Racial violence had broken out again that Friday, even before news of the attack on Colin Cole. A white student at Berghard High School was stabbed that morning by a black classmate. In the afternoon, a car with two black men turned the wrong way onto Elm Street, a one-way street, and ran down two white males. Witnesses claimed that the car had aimed for the white men, one of whom fell off the car hood twenty-five feet past the point of impact, while the other had been dragged seventy-five yards. Both victims were admitted to the hospital, and police had charged the forty-six-year-old black driver with drunk driving and hit-and-run injury. Starting around nine PM, police were called repeatedly to the intersection of Jefferson and Sycamore on reports that gangs of blacks were attacking passing cars with axes and meat cleavers. Whites driving by were pelted with rocks and bottles. A white man from Toronto was dragged from his car by a group of young black males, one of whom hit him with a baseball bat. A shot was fired at a black tabby. A van and a car filled with white youths stopped in front of a bar and fired a shotgun blast through the front window, fortunately missing the patrons inside. A group of twelve young black men hurled a cement block at a white police officer driving an unmarked patrol car. It hit the vehicle with such force that it shattered the rear driver's side window and shot across to the passenger window, shattering it as well. When the officer opened his car door, all twelve charged toward him. He sped away. The city seemed to be going mad. Bennett Smith denounced the violence during a prayer meeting the following morning at Push Headquarters that was broadcast over the radio. "Young brothers and sisters are standing on the street corners, throwing bottles at buses and rocks at cars," Smith intoned. "They are only hurting the situation." Jesse Jackson attended the prayer meeting, which attracted a capacity crowd. Edward Cosgrove had also come, somewhat bravely perhaps, considering the criticism that had been leveled at him by Smith. But the district attorney, well aware of the escalating violence and the fever pitch in the black community, had some things he wanted to say. Bennett Smith introduced Cosgrove as "the man who doesn't know who I am," a reference to the meeting the day before when Cosgrove had turned to Smith and said, "I don't know who you are." "Mr. Cosgrove has been so busy chasing the mafia, he hasn't had the time to find out who I am," Smith told the assembly. He reproached the district attorney for rarely visiting the east side and the black community. "Now that he's here, it's a national and local news event." Ed Cosgrove had handled tough crowds before. Stepping up to the microphone, the district attorney said, "One of the worst things about my job is that I get to see very little of good people and good things. I haven't met you, Mr. Smith, sir, because you are a good man." This provoked a grin from Bennett Smith and applause from the crowd. Jesse Jackson was later heard to remark that Cosgrove had a good speechwriter. Poised and gentlemanly, the district attorney spent an hour speaking to and with the attendees, during which he received rounds of applause in growing frequency as the crowd transformed from suspicious to gracious. At the end of the hour, even Bennett Smith had changed his mind. Smith led the final round of applause for Cosgrove, telling the audience, "Let's support our DA, let's hear it for our DA." Cosgrove actually divulged very little in the way of solid information about the progress of the investigation, other than to say with assurance that the investigation was progressing and that things were looking brighter. One of the attendees was one of Parler Edwards's sons. When asked when his father's body would be released for burial, Cosgrove explained that the body had to be retained at the medical examiner's office for the time being due to the ongoing investigation. Cosgrove scored points by acknowledging that groups like the KKK actually do exist, adding that police had done a rundown of former Klan members but that no evidence tied the murders to any such extremist group. Earlier that week, the Buffalo Evening News had quoted him as saying that "there were no KKK or neo-Nazi groups in the community." Cosgrove denied ever saying this. The crowd was encouraged to hear that the nurse, as well as three other hospital employees, had gotten a good look at the strangler. FBI agents were on their way to Buffalo to produce a new composite and assist with the manhunt. The most tantalizing bit of information that the district attorney shared seemed to indicate a breaking development. "We hope to have some good news soon," Cosgrove told the audience. "There is something very interesting, something very substantial going on right now," he said. He could not elaborate, but told the crowd, "We are preparing search warrants for certain places." When asked if this meant that an arrest was imminent, he replied no, but stressed his optimism over the recent development. "I'm a lot more encouraged than I was last night at ten thirty." After the meeting, Bennett Smith was effusive in his compliments for the district attorney, praising him to the press for his appearance at Push. Smith took it as a sign that the DA was truly concerned about the black community. Councilman James Pitts took a more reserved view of Cosgrove's presentation. "It was encouraging," Pitts was quoted, "but what we really need is an arrest." An arrest had in fact been made, though not for murder. The substantial development that had inspired such optimism in Ed Cosgrove was the arrest hours earlier of a local man on charges of driving while intoxicated, or DWI. At one fifty AM on Saturday, October eleventh, an Amherst police officer arrested the twenty-nine-year-old white male who gave his address as "Room Twenty-Eight at the Grand Motor Inn, Two Thousand Niagara Falls Boulevard in Tonawanda." In the course of the arrest, the man made what Ed Cosgrove would later describe to the media as bizarre statements. As recorded by the arresting officer, the man had said, "He hates niggers and tried to strangle a nigger in a hospital yesterday. If you open up a nigger, it's messy, and that you put niggers in trunks." That he, suspect, called nigger blood ketchup and that people throw blood on him. Right now he has clothing soaking in a tub at Two Thousand Niagara Falls Boulevard, Tonawanda, New York, with ketchup, nigger blood, all over it. And that further, three days ago, he had blood all over his hands and it hurt when he tried to wash it off. He had recently cut his hair because he had blood in it and could not get it out. He has a sharp knife in his room. The suspect was booked and held at the Amherst Jail for DWI and resisting arrest while Assistant DA Joseph Mordino immediately prepared an application for a search warrant of the Grand Motor Inn and the suspect's nineteen-seventy-five red Chevy, which he personally delivered to the home of a Supreme Court Justice for signature. Awaiting the warrants, John Reagan and other task force members were sent to the Grand Motor Inn to keep watch on the premises until the search could be executed. Among the items seized were a screwdriver, a pair of shears, a length of wire, and some clothing recovered from the garbage can outside the man's motel room. None of the clothing was bloody, no traces of blood were found on anything, and there was no sharp knife, nothing soaking in the tub. The only red substance noted was paint the man had sprayed all over the TV set and his car. The suspect was questioned for several hours. Checks of his background were made. He was taken to the Erie County Medical Center for a forensic examination. He had been treated there before, as well as at the Veterans Hospital for psychiatric problems. He had called the Amherst Police a number of times to confess to crimes. He had also confessed to the latest murders to an associated press reporter, who told police that the man also claimed to know that the reporter had committed a murder of his own. Ed Cosgrove held a press conference Saturday evening, where reporters noted that he was markedly less enthusiastic about the Amherst man. By Monday, he said the man had been discounted as a suspect. City streets were much quieter on Saturday than on the two previous nights. The intersection of Jefferson and Sycamore was littered with debris and broken glass, remnants of the violence. But there were no further incidents. While there were two shootings on the east side that night, they were not racially motivated, and there were no new reports of black-white violence. Three factors helped keep the uneasy peace: the damp, cold weather, the visible street presence of extra patrol cars, including several from the Sheriff's Department in addition to the Buffalo Police, and media reports of the attacks that had occurred on Thursday and Friday, which, according to police officers, had kept whites out of the black neighborhoods on Saturday. As one cop told a reporter, "They're nuts if they're going in there now." While a tense calm had settled over the city, there were two cross burnings over the weekend in the suburb of Lockport. This time it was done by whites, who were arrested and charged with criminal mischief. Things had clearly not returned to normal in Buffalo, however, and officials rightly recognized the relative peace as a temporary lull rather than a good omen. Mayor Griffin had cut short his trip and returned to Buffalo late Saturday, where he was met at the airport by Police Commissioner Cunningham for an update on the investigation. The mayor, Cosgrove, Cunningham, and a host of local clergy, both black and white, made daily appeals to the community for calm and brotherhood. daily appeals to the community for calm and brotherhood. Cunningham told the press he was confident the Twenty-Two Caliber Killer would be captured soon. Rewards for information were upped into the tens of thousands of dollars. The task force operated twenty-four-seven, pursuing every lead. Still, the only thing that could really bring about any sort of a return to normalcy would be an arrest. That hadn't happened, and despite assurances to the contrary, none were on the horizon. Perhaps the most tragic act of retaliation occurred on Tuesday, October fourteenth, the same day that city officials, in an attempt to forge respect and camaraderie throughout the larger community, declared a twenty-one-day period of mourning for the six murder victims. Terrence Lee Mills, age thirty-seven, was an urban planner at the Central City Restoration Corp. in downtown Buffalo. Mills had earned his law degree from the prestigious George Washington University, where he had been an honors student. Instead of pursuing a potentially lucrative legal career, Terrence Mills had chosen to return to hometown Buffalo and devote himself to the revitalization of the city's poorest and most blighted neighborhoods. Mills left his office at around six-thirty that Tuesday evening and was walking toward his car when he was stopped by two black men. One of the men showed a knife and demanded money. Mills handed over his wallet. He raised his hands in the air and told the men, "That's all I have." The black man with the knife took the wallet, then he plunged the knife into Terrence Mills's chest. The two men ran away. Witnesses said that the man with the knife jumped into a cab at nearby Niagara Square. Terrence Mills told police what happened to him before dying in a hospital a half hour after the stabbing. Police later found his wallet, credit cards, and a knife with the inscription "Double-O-Seven in a Sewer." The killer was Larry Barnes, age twenty, nickname "Too Tall" because of his six-foot-four height. Barnes went to an east-side pizzeria that night and bragged to friends that he had yoked a white guy and showed off the bloody knife to prove it. "And I'll yoke another one if I have to," Barnes declared. Barnes and some others felt the killing was justified, a white life violently taken in exchange for the black men who had been snuffed out. Some congratulated him for doing the right thing. Not everyone agreed that murdering an innocent white man was the right thing to do. Informants quietly went to the police and told them what they had heard at the pizzeria. Larry Barnes fled to California. He was indicted in absentia and arrested a year later in San Jose by the FBI. He eventually pled guilty to first-degree manslaughter and served seventeen years. Barnes refused to name his accomplice, and the second man was never apprehended. The mother of Terrence Mills said that of the scores of sympathetic calls and letters of condolence she received, the ones that meant the most to her had come from the many black residents at Willard Park, the inner-city housing project that Terrence had been working to revitalize at the time of his murder, expressing sorrow and telling her how grateful they were for all that her son had done for them. A Unity Day rally was held on the afternoon of Sunday, October nineteenth. Five thousand people of different races and religions gathered in downtown Buffalo to show solidarity. They wore black ribbons in remembrance of the murdered men. They held hands and vowed that good would triumph over evil and that the community stood as one. Mayor Griffin and the politicians gave speeches. Religious leaders offered prayers and words of hope. Bennett Smith spoke of a mighty resurrection and a glorious ascension when all races would walk together in peace. Newspapers heralded the success of Unity Day. The remarkable turnout showed the promise of a brighter future. The glow of goodwill had warmed and inspired. It was a day of great hope and community bonding for the people of Buffalo, the last they'd see for a while. As Western New York entered the nineteen eighty holiday season, peace and unity would be as elusive as the killer or killers themselves.
There we go. Muted context of white supremacy. Some of that Unity Day rally content got me discombobulated and didn't get myself unmuted correctly. Alrighty. Gusty, Black OJ. End of the first audio segment. We'll resume, so we'll pick up audio segment number two, Chapter Seven, which is dated specifically October twenty to October twenty-one. So we got a whole chapter that is just two days. Number to dial, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred. The code, five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star-six-one if you would like to participate. If anybody, if you think you had a tough time in hearing about Mr. Mills, white man who was killed by these black people, later convicted by this black male, there is an entire chapter on Mr. Mills in Matt Greiter's book. He was a guest on our program on so-called Memorial Day. Number again, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred. The code, five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star-six-one if you would like to participate. The email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Can read your commentary if you have thoughts, if you would like to remain anonymous and all that good stuff. Untiljustice@gmail.com. You can share your thoughts, questions, all of that if you're not able or willing to dial in. Let's see, again, no tangents, focused on what we heard in the text. Let's see. Check and see, star-six-one for folks who have commentary. Let's see. Folks are spectating. I will get to my notes and some of the emails as well. I will also tell folks, I was gonna say, you can let me know because we took more time to get to the audio today, but only because, and it wasn't even mentioned, I didn't even check, I said, "Let's see, she's had a lot of detail in the book thus far." She did mention the Atlanta child murders. She did not mention the Bowen Homes explosion. Let's see, some of our folks who wrote in, I'll read some of their thoughts first. Chapter six. Number one, shots fired at the Buffalo Fire Department, unprovoked attacks where the victims were white, the perpetrators were black. Burning cross that scorched the night sky. Black teens admitted responsibility for the prank. A lot of confusion among non-white victims is expected. Number two, our big worry is that some innocent white people are going to get hurt. This was a very telling statement. Isn't this always the big worry? Harming innocent black people is just business as usual in the global system of racism, white supremacy. Indeed, even that statement, innocent white person, it was said a number of times, like, hmm, under any context, I would have to give that a long pause, like, innocent white person. Not to mention, hey, in this system, innocent and white are most synonyms. Oh, I think they are. I think that's in the dictionary scene in Malcolm X, but neither here nor there. Number three, Twenty-Two Caliber Killer had become the Boogeyman. Is boogeyman in the word God? I don't think so, but we'll see. The origin of this word and spelling may be Old English, but it seems that it may currently be associated with black people, only with a different spelling. "To Boogie Dance, I'm Your Boogeyman by KC and the Sunshine Band. DeMarcus Boogie Cousins of the NBA." I'm not sure about this. It could be. I have, I have heard a lot of racist associations with Boogeyman, and even where it's kind of stereotypically thought of, that the nigger is the Boogeyman, Boogie Monster. So, yeah, there's a lot to that. I can't think of any white people named Boogie, nicknamed Boogie. Number four, Jesse Jackson, "Nothing would be more powerful than a made-up mind. Violence would be suicidal. There's power in the vote. If we have political power, we can demand the district attorney." Did Reverend Jackson, incidentally, this is, I believe, four years before Jesse Jackson ran for president? I have to go back to double-check my math, but I think, yeah, this is four years before he ran for president on the Democratic ticket, if that means anything to him. Did Reverend Jackson mean that a made-up mind equals dedication to a purpose? I don't know, because I think made-up mind is a metaphor, but whatever. "Can non-white victims have political power in a global system of racism? White supremacy would certainly be minority power." And meaning, in numbers, meaning you do not have the majority. The balance of the control is not going to be with you, so we would have minority powers regardless of our population numbers. And he says, "I suspect not." I agree. Similar statements about voting are made today by non-white victims with similar results. This person wrote that in last week and said, "Man, more than forty years have passed, and we have some of the exact same thoughts, exact same ways of articulating our views on white supremacy racism." Like, and it's not like this was an accurate, pristine way of articulating counter-racist thought back then, like it was terrible then and terrible now. No improvement made at all, no counter-racist logic. Still pitiful. Continuing, number five, Erie County Medical Center, Colin Cole, a white male had choked him. Another example of what it means to be white. Christopher was able to walk right into this hospital with some phony ID and escape unimpended. It seems as though Gus raised an interesting point with Matt Greiter, two mentions. This seems like it could be a very directed attack, not random, and at least plausible that Christopher knew Mr. Cole, maybe as a result of previous anti-sexual encounter. Then you have to have a memory and/or, we'll have to see, because the chapter just ended, right? So I'm pretty sure we have a lot of book left to go. She'll give us more detail in Chapter Seven, but Colin Cole, he survives, right? He's the black male, only black male on the floor at the hospital, if you remember from Matt Greiter's book. So he comes in, she tries to choke him, nurse walks in. Oh, and even that, like, can you imagine? You're trying to kill someone. Strangle them to death, no less. Now, you're not gonna shoot him, stab him, whatever the case, you're gonna strangle them with your bare hands. Someone walks in on you, you are collected enough, oh my goodness, can you help me pick up the nigger? I mean, Bobby, yes, he fell on the floor. Come, come, hurry, hurry, hurry. And then before she can even figure out, like, wait a minute, he didn't fall. Whoa, his neck has been, whoa, he went, gone. Stealth white terrorist. But yeah, that is important. Colin, part of me is like, we, well, we talked about all this before. Colin Cole, Colin Cole allegedly in all this anti-sexual behavior, known to be, like, would dress, behave like a female, all this anti-sexual behavior. Ooh, we, ooh, that's what I raised that point with Matt Greiter, like, oh, man, we haven't got to, Christopher, we haven't, we don't even know him yet at this point in the story, but I said, ooh, we, you gotta keep that in mind. I asked him, "Do we think they knew each other?" Like, huh, he just knows this is the only, anyway, we have to see what she gets into all that. Number six, Unity Day, five thousand people of different races and religions. These type of demonstrations continue today. Exactly, examples. Black Lives Matter demonstrations with questionable effectiveness. Maybe totally ineffective, because we wouldn't have to keep doing them if they were effective, right? Absent, another one where we haven't made any progress at all in our understanding of racism, white supremacy. That the Unity Day, Unity Day, we would have heard it this week, a listener got great archival information. We got some of the actual footage, like, news footage for local Buffalo news coverage of these events. They have coverage of the Unity Day parade, they have coverage of Jesse Jackson's visit, they have coverage of some of the first reports of Glenn Dunn and Harold Green. We'll play it next week so you can hear some of that. Would have played it this week, but just again, the Bowen Homes explosion, that wasn't included at all. That is so important in my view, because she mentions the Atlanta child murders, right? The Bowen Homes explosion is not the Atlanta child murders, like, that's, that's as it is reported. That is totally separate, that's not Wayne, that is totally separate incident, that is not on the list of lost children at all as reported. This is an accident. But you heard all of that, like, that had such a hu, I mean, tragedy, period. Five deaths, four children, all of them black, and then the speculation, now, was this an accident and all of that? But to have no mention of that in the same days when all of this is happening and that Georgia-New York link continues for the duration of this case, like, that really bothered me. I'm so glad I was able to include that. Folks can let me know if you, you know, thought that was a waste of time or what have you. I'll get to some of my notes and then double-check, see if folks have thoughts that they want to share on the conclusion of Chapter Six that we just heard before we push off to Chapter Seven. So let's see. Alright, so we pick up the news conference and no white supremacists did this, this is no KKK conspiracy. That's what we left off at last week. Alright, so we go in this week and he's gonna come out and give them all the details. Yeah, they carved the hearts out and, you know, blah, 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 this is terrible, all that good stuff. And they said that there's no evid, I thought this was important, they said, so, there's no evidence in any way to connect the four September Twenty-Two Caliber killings to this case. Now, I thought that was important, because also, the same thing had been happening in Atlanta for a long time, where they had been saying that these killings are not connected. At first, they say, hey, they connect the bullets, so they say these first four are connected, but hey, these are not, because they switch up the modus operandi. You know, these are stabbings and all of this, mutilating and taking the heart out and all the rest of it, so these are not related. And they say, kind of the same thing in Atlanta, because you have the different types of murders. Some of the victims have been strangled, some of the victims, they couldn't even determine what the, the cause of death was. So you had, you know, different, that's why they were saying the same thing there, too. Let's see, continue. So, they give out the details of the mutilations. She said that they made, made a plea for the Buffalo Police Benevolent Association to stop its unofficial slowdown and demonstrate to the black community that they are concerned for its welfare. Again, they're having some sort of contract dispute, and there were many black people at the time who thought this contributed to them not being able to find the suspect quicker. If police are saying they're not gonna do tickets and all the rest, then eh, I'm not, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give fifty percent effort today, you know, till they do right by us with the contract. And again, we've heard this before, right? Having slowdowns in New York, we're upset, you're picking on us, law enforcement officials here in Seattle, too. Let's see, next, as I said, no mention of Bowen Homes. We can get all this detail about black-on-white violence, whole section on Mr. Mills and all that. Bowen Homes. I submit, if it had been a nursery where four white children and a white educator had been killed, and it was somehow related to, I mean, you're mentioning Atlanta child murders, nobody, I mean, the worst report on the Atlanta child murders, like, the D-minus report on the Atlanta child murders mentions Bowen Homes. Nobody talks about that event without mentioning Bowen Homes, but it did happen here. And I mean, hey, we're going bullet time, day by day, we just walked right over October thirteen where that happened. I guess it would be up to you, now, how important do you think that is in the scheme of all of this, where black people are being thought of as hysterical and upset with white people? Continue. So she talks about the amount of publicity that all of this got, and in my attention, in my opinion, it should have. We had one of our folks who called in the first week, I believe, and said that they should have had a press conference immediately and saying, hey, black males, be on alert, and particularly given the context. So we've already had a lot of attacks against black males, and it was a disproportionate number of black males who were missing and murdered with the so-called Atlanta child murders and Joseph Paul Franklin, he was shooting a lot of black males. Should have had a press conference. Some of the black publications at the time said the exact same thing, so I don't have a problem. It seems like she's, you know, saying that this was kind of sensational. sensational attention, and, oh, this will be similar to Summer of Sam, so we can sell some newspapers, that sort of thing. Hey, that's a part of it, but I mean, at least it's getting the word out that this is happening. Uh, she says, uh, "Now, the promo for a late newscast had an anchor tag with the big story, hunting the hacky hacker." Now, I mean, black lives are not mattered, so that's about the, you know, way we'll come out and describe this, it won't be something serious, and we're about justice and stopping this immediately." Uh, let's see. Next, uh, the cross burning, where she says that this was reportedly done by black youths. Now, I did, I saw the person who wrote it, and I saw his note about that, so I went through the newspaper archives to see, do they have a report where they, you know, share this, disclose this? I was not able to find such a report, and she does not cite a newspaper report where there is a confession, uh, about all of this, and, you know, they admit that they did this. Uh, there's no newspaper report, uh, with all of this, there's no nothing, there's no police report, nothing, uh, that this was done, or, excuse me, she says, "The police conclude, uh, that this was done," sorry, my bad, she does have, she has the police report where she said, where they say that they conclude that this was done to drum up support or attention or what have you. Matt Greiter, incidentally, did say that he thought Palanero got access to some police documents or what have you to, you know, yay, you got some special sources, whatever, because she's got big backing for her book publication. All of that said, this was not, like, in the newspaper or what have you at the time? Like, all we got is some police report that they think this was staged? How many incidents are you all aware of black people staging a cross burning? Hopefully to bring attention to the plight of, of black people, to help them get some problems solved? Like, has that worked ever? Does anybody, forget whether it's worked, is anybody aware of this? I'm very aware, they have whole books called The Racial Hoax, uh, where they, you know, black people will come and do something and say that it's an act of racism, and then find out, oh, no, they stationed, did this, or what have you. Burning a cross, is that one? And again, in this context? Okay, and even, I was going to push more, right? Because I said, I look, because they do have quite a few newspaper reports about this cross burning, all the way through, end of nineteen eighty and into nineteen eighty-one, not one, where, oh, man, the police said that they think this was staged, because, I mean, they report that sort of thing. Fox News didn't exist at the time, but they report that sort of thing. I didn't find any, I couldn't push too hard, because she immediately comes back and says that there were other cross burnings, and the white people were arrested, so it's, eh, eh, how much am I to push on this? And she didn't even include the coon hunting licenses. I've been reading that one, we had guests from Buffalo and all that, she didn't even include that one, I could have went and got more, so I couldn't even push too hard on that. Anywho, uh, let's see. Uh, she continues, she says, "Oh, and the way that she did it, she says, 'The staged cross burning was particularly vexing to police officers like Clifton Jones and Danny Owens, both of whom were black officers. Officers Jones and Owens wanted to form a task force of officers to help not only with the investigation of the killings, but to help keep peace in the black community and prevent further incendiary acts. Stanching the tide of vigilantism was even greater concern. Some of the blacks are starting to retaliate, Officer Jones told a reporter. Our big worry is that some," and now, see, is he saying that the cross burning is a retaliation? Or is he just talking about some of these other, the rock hurling and attacking, uh, Mr. Mills, that sort of thing? Like I said, there are lots of newspaper reports of black people arming themselves and retaliating against white people, even random individuals classified as white. Many, many reports of that during this time period, even, you know, beyond Buffalo. Uh, let's see, uh, "Our big worry is that some innocent white people are going to get hurt." I said the same thing. This isn't the same city of Buffalo we knew one month ago. Now, I submit, if a black person was going and doing this to white people, and a month had passed and no one had been caught, oh, any city would be substantially different, like, way different. Uh, you would have all kinds of things, it would be super unsafe for black people, so I mean, that's, you know, to be expected in an environment of injustice, and given the context, Bowen Holmes, not just, oh, missing and murdered children, nursery exploded, not bombed, they say, and not even related to Wayne Williams and all the rest, this is just, you know, oh, man, four dead black babies and a black educator. Uh, let's see. Let's see. James Cunningham, uh, reporting that he was attacked. Again, anything where she does mention a newspaper, you can grab, they have archives available online, especially for the New York State newspapers, you can track all of that down, so if you want to read about James Cunningham's attack, uh, and then even the witnesses, saying that this white blonde hippie looking fellow came out and attacked him. Now, that I thought was important, because they said the witnesses saw this, that this is not just, you know, some black person making it up and trying to stage something. Uh, she said several people had run outside during the commotion, which had happened near the intersection of Hotel Avenue and Military Road in Buffalo. The witnesses backed up the autoworker's account, the assailant was described as a short, stocky hippie-like guy in his mid twenties or thirties with long, fair hair. One, people, I guess generally, think of the hippies, hey, that's, that's your ally, brother Gus, the good old white hippies. I don't know, you know, how that would translate, you know, fifty years or sixty years later, but the good old white hippies, you know, smoking dope and long hair and all the rest of it, we love Brother Fred Hampton, you know, power to the people, and, you know, off the pig, yeah, right on, you know, love, peace, brother, all that nonsense, and not thinking of these folks as racists, uh, that we are easily fooled, and there's a great bit, and they come right behind, it's not just a hippie-looking white person, so he can't be racist, a hippie-looking white person with fair hair. Again, I say, hey, we can't have one word that is used to describe so white people can have fair hair and fair skin, and then we go to court and wonder why we can't get fair, treated in a fair manner? With our old kinky hair? An evil black complexion? Let's see. Matt Greiter, he mentioned the situation at the same time where the black bus driver, Paul Oberly, was struck, they don't even know what happened, uh, projectile, maybe it was a bullet, who knows? Uh, and I think he was probably, it probably was a shot, because they include that the car was run off the road behind him, the white people yelling white power. Matt Greiter includes all of that in his book, Joey Twenty-Two, he just didn't have the name, uh, for the black bus driver, Paul Oberly, that was the one I was asking about when he was a guest, and he said, "Well, that happened, that was not in New York, that happened closer to Syracuse," so probably, if you check the Syracuse paper, it'll probably be there, so, bingo, and those papers are available as well. Now that I got a name, probably be easy to find. Uh, let's see. So Jesse Jackson comes, again, there's video of this, we'll hear the audio next week. Um, he comes to speak, man, you can say what you want to, like, man, uh, Jesse Jackson did come, at least recognize, he spoke to a thousand people, like, you know, he wouldn't have said what I would have said, and that's to be expected, victims guaranteed qualified, but I mean, he was there, they have video of that, that should at least count for something. I don't think that, I don't think you get put on the list for being coon of the week, just for going to Buffalo where some black males have been killed, and it doesn't even warrant much attention to go and say, yes, this does matter, this is Right on, let's see. He says, "We don't," man, the metaphor, now, he didn't say what I would have said, metaphor, "We don't have to fight fire with fire, we don't have to fight lives with lives, we don't have to fight hate with hate, we must change our minds, we then change people's minds about us," Jackson said in a rising voice, "There is nothing in the world more powerful than a made up mind." I have no idea really what in me of that means. I am suspicious anytime where we are discussing racism, white supremacy, and people are saying things where the response is some sort of, woo, hallelujah, tell it, but like, whoa, whoa, this should be like calculus class. Let's make sure what we're hearing is accurate, logical, not woo, hallelujah, praise, preach it, even if it does make sense, like, that's not cause for, you know, any of the above, and like, I don't know what any of that means, made up mind and fight fire with fire, and, you know, blah, da, blah, whatever. Uh, he continues, uh, "He warned us that resorting to violence would be suicidal for blacks. Be aware of anybody who tries to define your manhood as getting a gun and getting revenge." Now, that's specific, and that is logical. Jackson said, "There they are with all those guns and police and investigators and judges, here we are with women and children and no husbands, trapped in a neighborhood where they can turn off the lights and turn the gas off, or on, and pull the supermarkets out." Tops that A-plus counter racist logic. I challenge anybody, all time, counter racist perspective, what's incorrect about that? What's inaccurate about that? Pick out the flaw. What'd he say that was inaccurate, not truthful, cowardly, That part, no metaphor, and that's what I mean, that's what we need, don't come in here talking a whole lot of metaphors and shit, because that's not worthy of a hallelujah either, that's just facts. Absolutely correct. This is what's going to happen, because even the going out in bottles and all this, and, yeah, I struck, uh, Mr. Mills, I got him, boy, ooh, okay. They were asking for the National Guard, so, hey, this could go a lot of different way, and they were playing Death Wish at the time, so, yeah, you would have white people who would be ecstatic at the thought of, ooh, go out and join them, ooh, be a whole lot of hippie-looking white people out doing damage. Let's see. Oh, now, see, we get all that constructive, uh, information, right? Don't go for the gun and all that, and then we got to go back to voting. Now, I mean, you know, VGQ, victims guaranteed qualified, I can think of a lot of other things, like, hey, we can even, you know, organize a boycott, right? In terms of how we spend, like, we're not going to do any spending downtown, or X, Y, and Z, until this problem has been solved. Like, hey, get their attention, this problem is serious, we're not doing, whole lots of different things that they could have done to call attention, more so than, you know, I am somebody, that's, and I don't know what that means, like, you know. Um, and then they sung, "We shall over." Incidentally, I would, let me point out one thing, play it next week, it is interesting, when a white person writes, like I said, all of these sources are available, you can go and get the newspapers, all of them, the video, if anybody, if we can get that Nightline video from October nineteen eighty, I would love to check it out, where they talked about what was happening in Buffalo, uh, but most of this, like, ninety-five percent of this material is available, okay? Jesse Jackson, yes, he did go to Buffalo, he did speak, he talked for, you know, all this time or what have you. There was a US presidential election, literally about fourteen days away, less than twenty, from the time Jesse Jackson spoke. You know what else he said? He said, "We're going to use our votes," as we were talking about, "We're going to use our votes to retire racism, retire Reagan." Now, I don't think that's a whole lot better than "we shall overcome," truth be told, but I mean, hey, she didn't include that part, retire racism, retire Reagan. Now, obviously, that didn't happen, neither one, but that did get left out. Jesse Jackson had a lot to say when he went there to visit. Uh, let's see, she continues, "Channel seven studios, along with local religious, political, and civic leaders," even that, they got Jesse Jackson and local religious leaders, we need investigators, uh, folks who are about logistics, this is not a time for folks to come in and pray and all the rest of it, because, I mean, really, even the rock pelting and all that, if this is about safety, catching this person, and safety, we, this is not time for praying and handholding, like, at all. Um, I would love to see the Channel seven, uh, footage, if that exists. Man, field trip to, I have never wanted to go to Buffalo in my life, but man, if I could go to Buffalo and hang out for, like, a week, and just watch some of this old archival footage, and then even see what's going on now, maybe even swing through Conklin on the way back, man, field trip to upstate New York, and it's got to be in the summertime, like, because I, you know, I don't do cold, so, yeah, this would be the time to go. If anybody thinks that this has been worthwhile, if you've learned, if you think it would be great to have a counter racist report detailed, Gus T. Renegade to do a Sojourn to West New York, at, like, hmm, a week, I think maybe a week, especially in the summertime, because there'd be nobody there, like, I could hang out the University of Buffalo, the library, maybe swing by the Challenger and chat it up really quick, go through their archives again, and, yeah, a week, if anybody thinks that would be worthwhile, let's see if that would be a project to, to fund, uh, because that should be super, you know, cheap, a week, maybe two weeks to hang out in Buffalo and research, do some programs. Continuing, let's see. Black community, that term was used so many times, uh, here, if there was a black community, we would not have this problem. Uh, she said, "Cosgrove, so they go to have their meeting, Cosgrove scores some points by acknowledging that groups like the KKK actually do exist, adding that police had done a rundown of former Klan members, that no evidence tied the murders to any such extremist, extremist group. Earlier that week, the Buffalo Evening News had quoted him as saying there were no KKK or neo-Nazi groups in the community. Cosgrove denied ever saying this." Hmm, I'm going to take the newspaper, I don't think they would have lied, uh, about such a statement. Incidentally, I posted the article today, this very same time period. Newsweek has a report of Klan members outarmed. I posted it on my Facebook page, as I did with a lot of other archival content from this time period, today and throughout the time we've been doing the book study, but they're training and, and declaring that we are totally down to kill black people, right, black people, police, like, they tell a reporter this, we are down to kill black people, police, whatever, it is about saving the white race, sounding exactly like Peyton S. Gendron. But that was in Newsweek at the exact same time that all of this was taking place. Uh, let's see, anything else, uh, the Terrence Mill attack? Now, see, in my view, I look at that, now, you could say that Joseph G. Christopher was a really shrewd dude. He went out and did these killings, whether it was the shootings, or the carving up folks and all that, like, he was slick, he scouted his folks out, he did his homework in advance, you know, all of that, and that's how he was able to avoid getting caught. Now, you would have to have a bad memory and be like, oh, yeah, didn't witnesses, Madonna Gorney, she forgot to tell them about the white guy, the dopey-looking white guy, and, oh, yeah, didn't the other witness not want to identify that, yeah, this was a white dude who did this shooting of Glenn Dunn? All of that happened, but when Terrence Mills, this white man, gets killed, stabbed, it's immediate, and in fact, informants. I thought that was so important, remember, Dr. Kenneth O'Reilly, "Reading is more important than watching television," he said, so-called, that's another reason, you can't have a community He said, so called, that's another reason, you can't have a community if you are saturated with informants. That is not a community. You don't know if this is a spy, is this person getting paid to go back and lie and make up information on me and all the rest of it? And I say, these are our black brothers and community members here, and he said, speak a little closer to the microphone. I mean, just say that one more time, black brother. Dr. Kenneth O'Reilly said that, like, way back J. Edgar Hoover days, we're talking like a hundred years ago. Go out and hit spies, he said, the barber shop pastors, people that are gonna be in areas where you'll be around a lot of black people, so you know what's going on. Not everyone agreed with the murdering of an innocent white, there it is again, like, oh my God. Innocent white man was the right thing to do, informants quiet, and she didn't say informants, she said, informants. Quietly went to the police and told them they had heard what they had heard at the pizzeria. Now, that's another one, where is this source that, that the police, is this, you know, cool police records that they give the good looking white women? Matt Greider said that too, like, he thought, she got it wrong, that's what he said, but she said, that is a good looking white woman. Let's see. The mother of Terrence Mills said that of the scores of sympathetic calls and letters of condolence she received, the ones that meant the most to her had come from the many black residents at Willard Park, the inner city housing project that Terrence had been working to revitalize at the time of his murder, expressing sorrow and telling her how grateful they were for all her son had done for them. Innocent white man. Incidentally, I read that report, the white man from Toronto, even after he got bashed, cut in his head, threatened, all of that, he said, man, if they stop and bash me in my head and tell me that they think I am the killer, it must be really bad for the black people down there. Like, I read that report last week from the Toronto Star. Knows what racism, white supremacy, they had slavery in Canada. Uh, let's see, double check and see if other folks, uh, that are listening have commentary they would like to share, folks who dialed in with a hand up, proceed. Bay Area Mom, yes ma'am.
Um, thank you for taking my call, greetings to you and everyone on the line. So, I remember that, uh, that, uh, that was the Bowman, um, the explosion in, um, Atlanta that was, uh, childcare was, I remember that. Um, but I don't remember, uh, um, the Joseph Christopher, that, that, um, I don't remember the, um, twenty-two caliber stuff, but I do remember that, and I remember that guy, that black guy, um, that they said was suspected of doing the child murders. And then I also remember, um, well, it just seemed like they had said he did it, um, and, um, killed some other people too, but it just didn't seem like he did it. It just seems like he was, who they said did it, so maybe, I wasn't thinking that since eighty-one, eighty-two or anything. But how maybe, um, they just tagged black people, random black people in the areas and made them the face of whatever, uh, crime it was, and then, hey, it's too bad, you say you do it, or maybe you can, um, kinda trick us with, um, you know, terror, asking me questions over and over, or just, oh, forget it, yeah, or whatever. But I think the guy still in jail, what I do remember, um, I remember that, um, I don't know why, maybe because I was a child, and that was scary. But what I noticed is, um, when, when the guy, the twenty-two caliber guy, when he started, well, when they first announced the first murder that he supposedly did, it was a kid first, so I think the little boy was fourteen years old, and he killed this kid first, then he started doing, um, just random adults. And it, they've been in Atlanta killing kids since the, uh, late seventies and not really solving them, then that kinda gives the dog whistle, or maybe not dog whistle, that kinda gives the okay to white people that they can go in their cities or states and do the same thing to black people, because, um, I believe that the white people during that time with the twenty-two caliber guy and, um, the stabbing, that they were, um, taking advantage of our fear. So you see random, like, I think it was like a blue van driving around, um, chasing black people and terrorizing them, so, um, and then they're afraid to fight back because they don't wanna get shot, because of course, the white people, they're armed. Um, and then with the, uh, oh, with the heart carving, the, the, I guess they, they call them cabbies? When they cut the two guys off, cut both of their hearts out, and then the, the, one of the relatives had to find out, um, thereafter about that, they didn't even know. And how, um, the cross burning, they said it was six black youth, but they just ran off, because it wasn't there, you can't accuse, no, it wasn't white people, they didn't have time to do that. I, I don't believe they did that. But we did see six black youth, and then they walked away. So, and then they said it was staged, so now they're saying that is staged, and then that's the wording. So, that, that stood out to me. And then with Jesse Jackson, so, not picking on anybody, but I do believe that that's his job to calm us down, to keep us from being reactionary and defending ourselves. Um, that's his job, so he does those riddles and rhymes and things, it's sort of like a concert at the park. So, they know, we like that kinda stuff, and that's what they do. So, and then there you go with the voting, and he's running for office four years later. I think that connects to something, and I don't believe he went out there, I believe he was sent out there. Great to see him, because, thank you, but I believe that's his job to diffuse the, uh, the, uh, scene. Thank you, I'll meet my line.
Yep, presidential run nineteen eighty-four, so I guess if you're gonna try to run for president, duh, voting would be important, getting people in a habit, thinking that voting is important, so that four years from now, hey! Uh, but incidentally, I just, because I think this is important, uh, there are so many times where black people are accused of being chumps and cowards, and these type of things happen because we don't fight back and we just allow racists to do whatever they want. Uh, that is not, like, categorically not the case here. Uh, Parler Edwards, uh, fought back, they talked about how he had defensive wounds, uh, on his hands, a number of the victims fought back against Joseph Christopher, and even, uh, beyond all of that, there were, as you were saying about Jesse Jackson, there were tons of reports, video of black people saying, hey, bring him on, like, I have got my gun, we have got our patrols, like I said about going out and attacking white people in both Atlanta and Buffalo. They had bat patrols, they have lots of videos that, uh, black males and black females, there were lots of black people, uh, who, you know, black self-respect. I am going out to protect, uh, black children, myself, as best I can. Even black people in Buffalo, they had black males, they would go out in pairs with someone hiding in the backseat with a gun to see if they could, you know, set up this person to try to do something so that they could, you know, get him, like, uh, lots of black people fought back. Uh, retired firefighter in Florida, do you have commentary, sir?
Yes, uh, just, uh, two things, greetings everyone, uh, I keep thinking that, uh, the, uh, McDuffie incident took up a lot of, uh, news time down here in South Florida, from the time that he was murdered by, by, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, by the, uh, by law enforcement, as well as the trial. Uh, it's what, it's not, it's not up to the modern day standards of, uh, of journalism, but, uh, they did have it on television just about every day. Uh, and so that took up a lot of time, uh, attention of, for, for a lot of, uh, non-white black people down here. Now, I wasn't, I wasn't, uh, here in South Florida for most of the time, because I was in grad school, I was going between Miami and, and Grambling, Louisiana. Uh, I can recall some of the teachers kinda like teasing me about what's going on down there in, in, uh, Miami, uh, when the rebellion broke out, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, but, uh, I think with that i- is probably the reason, uh, reason why a lot of people that would be down here, including me, that didn't have a clue that that existed. Now, the, the Atlanta child murders was a little bit afterwards, I think, correct?
Uh, again, all of these things happened at the same time in nineteen eighty.
Okay, okay, it, well, well, the Atlanta child murders, it was broadcast pretty, pretty prevalent, and, uh, it, it was, it was, uh, popular as far as knowledge and understanding that was going on. Uh, uh, but then again, a lot of people, a lot of black people from Miami also, uh, either have relatives in Georgia, e- especially in that part, area of Georgia. And, uh, so I think that's probably what made it so prevalent, because of, uh, Georgia's really not that far away from, uh, from Florida, from that standpoint. But, uh, other than that, uh, the second thing, the second thought that I had, you know, uh, you know, that law enforcement is, is looking for the killer, uh, from the standpoint of going through these quote-unquote white supremacist organizations. White people are, have a code, they don't need to, they don't, they don't need to just function in a group status. They can function pretty good in an individual status, under a global system of racism, white supremacy. And I, and I have to figure that white people know this, you know, that they don't have to function with the quote-unquote Ku Klux Klan, or, or neo-Nazi or something like that. Uh, they do pretty well as individuals, at, uh, uh, i.e. the, the incident that took place in Buffalo, uh, New York recently. Uh, those are my thoughts, because it's all, and, you know, it, it, it's typical that almost every time something like that comes up, you know, y- y- you can, you can think, figure that they, where they're gonna be, uh, that the press is gonna say that the law enforcement or whoever is, is examining some of the, the quote-unquote organizations, racist organizations. And, you know, it, it's, it's much more complicated than that, because white people individually are co, uh, on a, on a white code, white racist code. And, uh, so they can function as individuals, that's it.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. Uh, we will get to audio segment two, see if we can cover as much ground as we can in the text. Uh, if we missed you, or if you have additional thoughts, questions, uh, just write them down. We should have ample time to share once we are done. Catherine Pelanero, absolute madness, we're picking up at the very beginning, chapter seven.
Chapter seven, October twentieth to December twenty-first, nineteen eighty. One afternoon in the fall of nineteen eighty, a boy named Bobby Groth left his school, which was PS forty-three, and walked up to the corner of Lovejoy Avenue. There was always a crossing guard at Lovejoy because it was one of the main streets in the neighborhood. After the guard helped him cross the street, Bobby, who was eleven, went and sat on a bench to wait for his friends so they could walk home together. Somebody else was already on the bench, a guy Bobby had never seen before. To Bobby, he looked like a cool older kid, past high school, but still a kid. He wore an olive green army jacket, the kind like on the TV show Mash, and he sat perched on the top edge of the bench with his feet on the seat. Bobby sat down at the other end to wait for his friend. The cool older kid looked at him and smiled. "What's your name?" he asked. "Bobby," the boy answered. "What's yours?" "J.C." the older kid said, "like Jesus Christ." That gave Bobby a little jolt, what a weird thing to say, and really disrespectful. Bobby was an altar boy at Saint Francis. People he knew didn't talk that way, comparing themselves to Jesus Christ. Bobby could just imagine what the priests at Saint Francis would do if they heard that. The older kid started talking to him, kind of rambling about something, but Bobby wasn't really listening. He didn't wanna talk to a guy like this, even if he did look cool. The guy kept on talking, even though Bobby avoided looking at him and didn't say anything back. Later, Bobby wouldn't remember what he said, since Bobby had decided to just tune him out. Whatever it was, though, the guy seemed pretty animated, like he was trying to make a point or something. He kept talking, and Bobby started to feel anxious. He wasn't exactly scared, because the guy in the army jacket wasn't threatening him or anything. Plus, they were on a bench right on Lovejoy Avenue across from the school and the city pool. The weather was pretty nice, and there were other people around, although he and the older kid were the only ones on the bench. There were some firemen hanging out in front of the fire station, just a few yards away, and the crossing guard was still around somewhere, so Bobby didn't feel like he was in danger. Still, he wished that his friend would hurry up and get there, or that the older kid would just go away, or at least stop talking. Couldn't he tell that Bobby wasn't listening to him anyway? The only two things that Bobby would remember about the conversation, if you could call it that, were the first thing the guy said, the remark about Jesus Christ, and the last thing he said, because that's when Bobby got scared. Leaning toward Bobby so that their faces were only about a foot apart, the guy pointed down at the street and said, "Do you know what those bricks are for?" Bobby looked down. The boy was pointing at an area near the curb where some of the asphalt had worn away, exposing the bricks underneath. "Do you know what the bricks are for?" He seemed upbeat, like he was about to reveal something really exciting or important. Bobby was a little curious, so this time he answered and said, "No, he didn't know what the bricks were for." "They're there so you can pick them up and throw them at niggers." Bobby felt his stomach tighten. He didn't know what to say. The older kid was white, and so was Bobby, but Bobby wasn't used to hearing people talk that way. His parents had taught him better. Only bad people said terrible things like that, plus, it was scary. Not just what the guy in the army jacket had said, but how he said it, like he was really proud. That's when Bobby decided he was leaving. He wasn't going to stay on this bench with this older boy anymore, even if it meant he had to go stand on the sidewalk somewhere. Bobby Groth got up and started walking. He walked past the guy on the bench, who stared at him as he left. Bobby wasn't comfortable just standing on the sidewalk. He wanted to be away from the guy on the bench, so he kept walking and went inside a store a couple blocks away. The whole thing had upset him. He was glad he never saw that guy on the bench again after that. Eventually Bobby would see the scary older kid again, and he would recognize him right away. But fortunately for Bobby, they only met in person that once. Parler Edwards had died within two hours of eating his last meal. Tom Rowan had taken the stomach contents to a forensic laboratory in Binghamton, New York, for analysis, and to the university at Buffalo, where they were examined by a botany professor. Edwards had a mixture of vegetables in his stomach that indicated his last meal had been a salad. The toxicology screen showed no presence of drugs or alcohol. Ernest Shorty Jones also had a large quantity of undigested food in his stomach, showing that he too had eaten shortly before his death. Second autopsies were performed on the bodies of Parler Edwards and Ernest Jones in an effort to gain as much forensic information as possible, including a more precise idea of the weapons that had been used on each victim. Dr. Michael Batten was the deputy chief medical examiner for New York City, perhaps best known as the pathologist who had re-autopsied victims of the nineteen seventy-one Attica prison uprising. Batten had come to Buffalo along with Dr. Homer Campbell, a forensic odontologist from the University of New Mexico, and Dr. Campbell's wife, Karen Tober, a forensic anthropologist, the weekend following the discovery of the bodies. The examinations provided little insight beyond what the original medical examiner, Dr. Catherine Lloyd, had already given. Dr. Campbell determined that the instrument used to inflict the wounds on both victims had to have been as sharp as, or sharper, than a surgical scalpel. The odd puncture wounds in Ernest Jones's skull could have been made by a screwdriver. One of the first mandates of the task force had been the establishment of an evidence team to collect and process anything found on the crime scenes, or subsequently, that could be of evidentiary value. It was decided that the same group of scientific analysts would be immediately dispatched to the scenes of any future murders that could be related to the six. The evidence team consisted of a half dozen members called from the different agencies who could collaborate and share their scientific findings. Assigned from the state police were investigators Raymond Motica and Thomas Rash. From the Amherst Police, Lieutenant Michael Melton and Detective Michael Summers. Deputy Charles Fink from the Erie- Deputy Charles Fink from the Erie County Sheriff's Department, and Tom Rowan from the Chickewaga Police. The search for evidence had literally been conducted from land, sea, and air. In addition to the wide grid searches done at the scenes and the use of a helicopter, police divers had searched the Niagara River near the boat launch where the body of Jones had been found, in an effort to find the weapon or weapons. Ponds near the crime scenes had been drained. Roofs of nearby buildings had been searched. Metal detectors had been used to scan the ground. All to no avail. Working with the physical evidence they did have, blood, fingerprints, tire impressions, the evidence team was assisted in their analyses by crime labs of the New York State Police and Buffalo Police, as well as the FBI laboratory in Washington DC. The cabs of both Edwards and Jones had been exhaustively searched by the task force, as well as by a special unit brought in from the FBI. Each and every item found anywhere inside, every scrap of paper or loose penny trapped between seats, was catalogued and secured. Both cabs had been partially dismantled. Tires from each were shipped to the Washington FBI lab for comparison with bloody tire impressions taken from the pavements and casts of impressions left in the soil. A total of twenty-one latent fingerprints and palm prints were lifted from the cab of Ernest Jones. The bloody palm print on the rear driver's side window was identified as belonging to Jones. Two latent fingerprints were lifted from the trunk lid of Edwards's cab. The prints would only be valuable evidence, of course, if police had suspects to compare them to. Among the FBI personnel that had been whisked to Buffalo that first weekend were two special agents who authorities hoped could help shed light on the appearance and persona of the killer. One was Horace Hefner, a noted forensic artist who had been with the FBI for close to twenty-five years. Hefner had been brought in to re-interview witnesses and develop a new sketch of the suspect. The other was John E. Douglas, who had been with the Bureau for ten years and was currently an instructor at the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia. At age thirty-five, Douglas was considerably younger than many of the senior agents, but he had already made his mark, primarily in the burgeoning field of criminal profiling. Profiling was an investigative tool initiated in the FBI in nineteen seventy by Howard Tettin, a criminology instructor for the National Police Academy in Washington DC. Prior to joining the Bureau in nineteen sixty-two, Tettin was a seasoned police officer in San Leandro, California, with a keen interest in the study of criminal behavior, particularly aberrant criminal behavior, and how such knowledge could help identify suspects in unsolved crimes. Integrating a knowledge of forensic science, crime scene analysis, and abnormal psychology, criminal profiling is a method of hypothesizing the age, background, lifestyle, and character traits of likely suspects by scrutinizing details of a crime scene and the actions of the perpetrator, and then comparing them to known profiles of offenders of similar crimes. Tettin had been inspired by the work of Dr. James A. Brussels, a New York psychiatrist who, in nineteen fifty-six, had provided police with a detailed personality profile of New York City's Mad Bomber, an elusive terrorist who planted homemade explosives around the city for more than a decade. When George Matesky, the so-called Mad Bomber, was apprehended in January nineteen fifty-seven, the analysis provided by Dr. Brussels had proven to be uncannily precise, down to the type of clothing the suspect would wear. Howard Tettin and his Bureau colleagues had further developed the art and science of profiling, which had since become key coursework for agents in training and the cornerstone of the FBI's Behavioral Science Unit. John Douglas, as a young agent and instructor at Quantico, in fact, the youngest instructor at the FBI Academy when he had been appointed in nineteen seventy-seven to teach hostage negotiation and applied criminal psychology, had taken criminal profiling a step further by going straight to the source in violent crimes, speaking at length with perpetrators themselves. As the FBI had sent him around the country to teach criminal psychology classes, Douglas had used his spare time to visit various prisons and interview as many violent offenders as possible, focusing on those convicted of serial rapes, arsons, and homicides. He noted commonalities in their backgrounds and personality traits, and paired them with facts about their relationships and past professions to develop a character study, or criminal profile. Though profiling was still a relatively new and controversial technique, it had gained momentum as profiles submitted on some notable cases had proven to be remarkably accurate. More and more police agencies were willing to give it a try, particularly in cases that had stymied law enforcement. John Douglas had provided profiles in fifty-nine cases in nineteen seventy-nine. Requests for his services for this year had doubled. On October twelfth, nineteen eighty, three days after the discovery of the second murdered cab driver and three weeks after the twenty-two caliber shootings, John Douglas delivered a psychological profile to the task force. The first and most extensive part of his report dealt with the October eighth and ninth mutilation murders of Parler Edwards and Ernest Jones. "There are many ways to kill or have someone killed," Douglas wrote. "The underlying motivation of the offender is typically expressed by his crime. The presence or absence of anger, rage, frustration, and guilt can be observed in almost all criminal acts. The motivation behind the killer, killers, is obviously to kill blacks. However, this offender is not satisfied by just the process of killing his victims. He must totally consume them and take a part of them that for one reason or another is needed by him." Cases reviewed and personally profiled have found other cases throughout the United States where offenders have taken heads, hands, breasts, blood, and genital organs. The crimes are heinous and irrational. However, behind this madness is an offender who is mission-oriented. He will rationalize his acts as justifiable. Your offender is paranoid in his thinking and may be experiencing symptoms of delusions and/or hallucinations. This disorder was not created overnight. The disorder has been slow and insidious, commencing probably in his early to mid twenties. He will have a prior psychiatric history where in all probability, he has been treated for the disorder known as paranoid schizophrenia. What this diagnosis signifies is an individual who may be delusional as well as experiencing hallucinatory symptoms. The crime scenes reflect rage, over-control, as well as overkill. The offender comes prepared with his kit. His kit will include his weapons as well as perhaps containers, box, jar, et cetera, to transport his souvenir. The crime scene also reflects that the hearts of his victims were cut out post-mortem. He had time to do his mission. The personal feeling here is that he is illogical in his thinking, disorganized, and careless. He does not necessarily want to get caught, but he is sloppy and careless during the commission of the assault. The drop sites are areas that are known to your offender. He either resides, has been, or is employed nearby, or has family members in this vicinity. Most cases fitting this pattern will find the offender not owning a personal vehicle. If he does, it will be an older model and not properly maintained. Douglas provided the background of the offender. "He comes as a product of child abuse, a broken home, alcoholic parents, one or both, absent or passive father. A possessive mother who may have incestuous relationships with him as a child. In school, he was average to above-average in intelligence, however, he never really made the grade. He was and is passive, introverted, and withdrawn. He has a poor self-concept and may have had a serious injury or illness. He does not verbally communicate well with others and avoids coming into direct contact with anyone. He may be a veteran of one of the armed services, however, he would have been discharged early in his career for medical reasons or failure to adjust to military life." The profile advised that the offender would keep a hidden diary that could contain incriminating statements, and that he probably lived alone. If he were married, it was for a very short period of time. The wife will be considerably younger, either chronologically or in maturity at the time of their marriage. Your offender, if employed, will be involved in menial occupations. Delving into the area of criminal history, Douglas wrote, "Within close proximity to all of his prior residences, you will find cases of mysterious fires, voyeurism, and animal torturing or experimentation. As stated earlier, he was not created overnight. Police or agencies involving black political movements may have received letters from your offender in the past. The letters will be rambling, disorganized, and statements made by him will be prejudiced and without any basis or foundation. Your offender lives in a world of fantasy. His fantasy will make him perform certain ritualistic acts that will be unexplainable, even by him. He will return to the crime scenes. The motivation for his return is to relive and heighten his past heinous behavior." Secondly, he will frequent the cemetery and communicate verbally with his victims, and may in fact plant items at the cemetery plot to include his victim's heart. Douglas gave detailed suggestions on interrogation techniques for the suspect, including the ideal time and place, at night, in a non-threatening environment, and the angle and distance at which interrogators should sit. He advised giving the suspect a pad of paper and his choice of black, blue, or red pens to write down his thoughts or confession. He should be told that you understand him and empathize with him. Your approach should be that you know he did the homicide, but allow him to tell you how he did it and why. You can also verbalize that there may be another part of his personality that he does not know, and maybe the both of you can reveal who this other personality is. Care should be taken here not to put words into the mouth of the suspect, or provide him with information that only the investigators and the murderer would know to be true. He advised that a thorough background investigation on the suspect should be conducted prior to the interview. Having such knowledge would serve the dual purpose of establishing a rapport and the ability to either discount or credit statements made by the suspect, who would be delusional. Three behavioristic patterns have been observed by similar offenders in the past. They will turn towards religion, alcohol, and/or drugs. This behavior is to the extreme, and his participation in these activities will be to the extreme. Law enforcement should view this behavior as a defense mechanism utilized by the offender as a means of coping with his bizarre and irrational criminal act. He may attempt to become overly rigid in his personality, and will oftentimes involve himself in mentally exhaustive and repetitious behavior patterns, known as obsessive-compulsive behavior. The offender feels he is losing control over himself, and he will attempt repetitious acts in order to repress his unwanted thoughts and memories of the crimes. Extreme orderliness and neatness will oftentimes be observed at their residence." Douglas summarized his findings. "Your offender is probably a white male in his late twenties to early thirties. He is paranoid in his thinking and mission-oriented. He is a loner, withdrawn, and nocturnal." He reiterated his opinions that the suspect would have a prior psychiatric history, come from a troubled home, and keep diaries of his innermost thoughts. Douglas contended that the offender may have attended the victim's funerals, and if so, his behavior had been inappropriate. Douglas offered a final thought regarding the removal of the victim's hearts. He will either preserve the heart, refrigerate, alcohol, et cetera, or consume it. If the victim's family members continue to request the killer to return the heart, he will probably in fact do so, if he has not consumed it. It will be delivered to the crime scene, place of assault, residence of the victim, or cemetery grave plot. The final pages of the profile addressed the twenty-two caliber killer. John Douglas saw pertinent differences in the two sets of homicides. "The question one asks," he wrote, "is whether the first four cases of homicide are related to the last two. Does or can the modus operandi of the homicidal personality change? These questions cannot be answered simply. The first four cases lack what we call pathology. There is nothing out of the ordinary done to the victims that we know of either prior to or after death. What may be pathological is the offender's determination to extinguish black men. This pathological disorder may be a subtle one, and may not show up as readily as in the last two cases. This is the type of individual who will join hate groups, or even groups who have positive values or goals. They will be similar in personality even if their goals are different. They begin to run into psychological problems somewhere between their early to middle thirties. They develop a highly systematized delusional system that may at times sound very convincing if one accepts its basic premises. People close to these individuals will eventually find these people obsessed with a mission. And if you are not with them in their ideological beliefs, they believe you are the enemy. The method and style of the homicides where the twenty-two caliber handgun was utilized appears to be organized and very rational in the mind of the killer. Generally, the personality of this individual will differ slightly from the offender pictured earlier in the first part of this report. This individual fits the personality style of an assassin who is also delusional, but who does not experience any of the hallucinations. He generally will be older and more articulate. He also is mission-oriented and likes to let the community and world know that he is responsible for his crimes. Generally, he will print or type letters setting forth his mission and send them to the local media and/or the case coordinator. His rationale for killing is that of the paranoid, who feels that no one in the past has listened to him attentively, and now because he has been ignored for so long, must do it all alone. I say alone because once again, offenders committing crimes, as demonstrated in the four shooting incidents, generally act alone. As stated earlier, the absence of any pathological crime scene data makes for a most difficult crime scene analysis. If we heard from this offender through written communiques, it would assist in my analysis. Whether or not all six homicides are related is a difficult question. They could be related if we see overt signs and precipitating factors in any suspects developed who during this period of time experienced a severe amount of stress. Stress caused by something either real or imagined. Stress that became too heavy a burden to bear." John Douglas did not reveal any of the specifics of his report to the media. The profile was kept confidential from all but key members of the task force. The one comment Douglas did make to the press was that his profile pointed to two different killers. In his report, Douglas noted the importance of victimology in drawing a profile. Knowing as much as possible about the victims beyond their sex, race, and ages had a bearing on an offender profile, as it did, of course, on the investigation as a whole. Background on the cab drivers had been limited at the time Douglas had been brought in. He had prepared his psychological sketch of the murderer of Parler Edwards and Ernest Jones, based on the basic data investigators were able to provide, and on the presumption that both men had been targeted because of their race and gender. The more investigators learned, however, it looked less and less likely that Edwards and Jones had been random victims of a homicidal stranger. Ernest Shorty Jones had been arrested eight times. Between nineteen fifty-eight and nineteen sixty-six, Jones was arrested four times on assault charges and once for petty larceny. In nineteen seventy, he had been charged with two counts of first-degree rape. His most recent arrest had occurred in April of nineteen seventy-eight for felony assault. He had no convictions. Parler Edwards also had eight arrests, although his were entirely separate from and unrelated to those of Shorty Jones. So far, there was no definitive evidence that Edwards and Jones knew each other, and the number of arrests on each man's rap sheet appeared to be coincidental. What might not have been coincidental was the white pad with three-digit numbers that had been found- that had been found on the dashboard in Shorty Jones's taxicab. Tracing Shorty's last movements had been nearly as easy as tracking the routine life of Parler Edwards, though for very different reasons. Whereas Edwards was a discreet man with set ways and a quiet social life, Shorty Jones was his opposite. Shorty had a lot of friends and acquaintances, many of whom had seen him on the last day and night of his life, and more of whom were aware that Shorty used his cab to run numbers, among other things. In contrast to staid Parler Edwards, whose connection to the numbers racket was thus far circumstantial and historical, Shorty Jones had spoken freely and even proudly about his criminal endeavors, at least with some people. One longtime acquaintance claimed that Shorty had told him point-blank that he used the cab as a front for his illegal enterprises. In addition to numbers, Jones sold drugs, mainly marijuana and pills, although one regular customer said that he could get almost anything by making a phone call, and he pimped prostitutes. One of his associates told police how Shorty had driven him down to Chippewa Street and pointed out his girls. Another friend said Shorty kept a collection of photos of his hookers in a bag in his cab. This explained the black satchel with images of unknown females that investigators had found. Shorty also had a couple of girlfriends. One steady lover in particular stood out. Zoe Fontaine was twenty-three, white, and worked as a night waitress at a diner northeast of downtown. Zoe's coworkers were well aware of her relationship with Shorty, who often stopped in for coffee and usually drove Zoe and another waitress home. According to her coworkers, Zoe had been distraught over Shorty's death because they were very close. Their relationship had apparently not been a secret. According to Shorty's brother, even Shorty's wife knew about Zoe. Zoe spoke candidly and tearfully with police about the relationship. Though Shorty maintained ties with his family, she said, he had been living with her for the past six months. They had first started dating in nineteen seventy, when Zoe was thirteen and Jones was thirty. They had gone out together off and on over the last ten years, but had been going steady for the past seven months. According to Zoe, she and Shorty were planning to be married in October nineteen eighty-one. She acknowledged that Shorty sold drugs, mainly at the Perry Projects, though she couldn't or wouldn't name his customers or suppliers. The previous July, he had brought a bag of marijuana to the apartment, and Zoe had helped him divide it up to sell. Shorty told her that he had stolen it from someone, but she didn't know from whom. As for numbers, she said that he placed bets regularly, but insisted he wasn't a runner. Zoe related two incidents that had occurred in the days immediately before Shorty's death. Close to midnight on the Friday before he was murdered, Shorty was driving Zoe to work in his cab when a rusty dark-blue van stopped alongside them at a traffic light. The van's driver, a white male with light hair, hollered at Shorty, "Hey, nigger, what are you doing with that white girl?" Shorty started to say something back, but Zoe stopped him. When the light changed, they and the van had turned in different directions, and that was the end of it. Two days later, Zoe was working an overnight shift when, somewhere between three-thirty and four AM, she noticed a white man sitting at the counter who kept staring at her. She described him as about five feet four, in his thirties, with dirty blond hair, pale skin, and a scar on his face. As he stared at her, she said he had a weird, evil look about him. Two seats away from him sat another white man, this one with brown hair and a wide mustache. She saw them talking and got the feeling that the two men knew each other but were trying to pretend like they didn't. Shorty came in about four-twenty AM and sat down with Zoe at the far-back counter. He kissed her, and Zoe noticed that the blond man was staring at them with what she again described as a mean, evil look. About twenty minutes later, Shorty got up to leave and said he'd return before her shift ended. As he passed the counter, Zoe saw the blond man look at Shorty, then put his head down and mumble something. Shorty walked outside to his cab, and the blond man followed him. Zoe saw him saying something to Shorty, who shook his head no. Shorty got in his cab and rolled his window up about three-quarters of the way. Blonde man was still talking, and Shorty was still shaking his head no as he drove off. The blond man came back into the restaurant. Zoe went to wait on a table, and when she came back a few minutes later, both the blond man and the man with the mustache were gone. A few minutes after that, another waitress told Zoe that Shorty had just called and said he wouldn't be coming back after all, that he'd see her after she got off work at eight AM because he didn't want any trouble to get started at the restaurant. He said that the guy who had followed him out told him to come up to his room at the Travel Lodge so he could blow him up. The waitress also told Zoe that she had overheard one of the customers tell the blond man that he looks like the twenty-two caliber killer, and he had responded that he was. Shorty had picked up Zoe at about eight-thirty-five AM. As they were walking from the restaurant, someone started hollering at them from a second-floor window of the Travel Lodge, which was next door to the diner. She looked up and saw a person standing at the window through the partly-open curtains, but she didn't have a clear view. Zoe was concerned that it might be the man who said he wanted to blow Shorty up, so she urged him along. They went to their apartment and stayed there until they went to dinner that night at eight-thirty. Zoe had not seen either of the men since. The last time she saw Shorty was at six-forty-five PM on October eighth, the last day of his life. He told her he was only working until midnight and that he'd meet her either at the restaurant or at the apartment. She never heard from him again. At four-fifteen PM the next day, as she was preparing supper for him at the apartment, she heard on the radio that he'd been killed. Zoe hadn't been concerned when Shorty didn't show up as planned, she explained, because he had a relative who was in the Navy Reserve or a similar organization, and he often drove this person to some basin in Tonawanda. And Zoe had assumed that this was the reason Shorty did not return the morning of October ninth. Investigators noted this information. Though it seemed an odd hour to drive someone to a naval reserve function, it tended to establish that Jones made periodic trips to the Tonawanda waterfront area. Whether or not this had any bearing on the fact that his body was discovered in a small boat-launching facility remained to be seen.
Alrighty, that will do it for our reading for this week. We will pick up, we're still in chapter seven, October twenty through the twenty-second. Next week, the number to dial is seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three, pound, press star-six-one if you would like to participate. Man, oh, man, Dr. Francis Cress Welzing. Let's see, make sure you don't wait till the last minute if you have commentary you would like to share. We missed you completely. Let me see, I'll get in our investor who wrote in what he had to say about chapter seven. Let's see, number one. Bobby Groth, what's your name? Like Jesus Christ, do you know what these bricks are for? They're so you can pick them up and throw at the negroes. Given this encounter and the recent murders of black males in Buffalo, did Bobby discuss it with his parents? Hmm, interesting, because yes, Bobby, apparently he said he didn't see this because they saw him in person one time. He doesn't see this guy until, you know, a while later, maybe after he's caught or what have you. So yeah, that would be interesting. Did he tell his parents? Did they tell the police? Some guy saying this, kind of weird, in the midst of all of this that's happening? You got retaliatory attacks on innocent white people and all that? Like, yeah, did Bobby tell his parents? Did they call the police? Let's see, number two. "This offender is not satisfied by just the process of killing his victims. He must totally consume." The motivation behind the killer is obviously to kill blacks. Offender is not satisfied by just the process of killing his victims. He must totally consume them. It is fascinating how often we can see connections between the delectable negro and the other book club selections, isn't it, isn't it? It better you understand racism, white supremacy than, hey! Connecting those dots, now I understand what I am looking at and how it relates to what I have seen previously. That is learning. Number three, Colin Cole. She saw the patient on the floor with a white man. Oh, wait, we didn't get that far, we didn't get that far. Next week, so excited, Dr. Welzing, didn't get that far. So, chapter seven, hold that thought, we'll pick up there for next week. All right, let me see. Notes that, matter of fact, before I get, one, she mentioned, like I said, any newspaper report she mentions, it's available. She mentioned the report that was published in the Courier-Express about the psychiatric profile of the killer from the University of Buffalo psychiatrist, Dr. Norman Solkoff, Dr. Welzing, that report profile of killer loner filled with hatred will strike again. This is from September thirty, nineteen, or, yeah, nineteen eighty. So the heart killings haven't even happened yet. So he says, oh, yeah, the murders will happen again, blah, blah, blah. So he says calculating criminal, because he's been called a maniac and all this other stuff. Dr. Solkoff said the killer may well be sick, but added he would not preclude the possibility he is a calculating criminal such as a terrorist. It's conceivable that he's not sick. Violence can be very self-serving. Very important, that was said before the hearts were carved out and all of that, which he didn't say all that, but he said, oh, yeah, it's going to be more violence, that's, you know, war to come. But that report is available. Incidentally, I do want to say, the Atlanta child murders case, yes, it did get a lot of attention. This case got a lot of attention, and in fact, pause for a minute. I told you all last week, the President of the United States talked about this case. You haven't got that far yet, but that did hap, I keep saying, can we get the Nightline footage? Nightline, Nightline did a whole segment on Buffalo and talked about this case. It was in newspapers across the world, as she said, and in fact, I posted a number of articles today. These two cases are mentioned at the same time, and I mean in a variety of ways, like in the same time, like there will be one newspaper article that mentions Atlanta and Buffalo killings together, and even the possibility that one racist or group of racists might be doing all of these killings in New York and Georgia. There are many reports with that. Then, same time, like, okay, you get the paper for October, I'll just pick a date. October nineteenth, we'll say, nineteen eighty. There will be on like page fifteen, at the top of the page, there'll be, oh, slangs in Buffalo and Jesse Jackson's visit, blah, blah, blah. Then at the bottom of the page, it'll be, task force convenes in Atlanta, fifteen children, blah, blah, blah. Sometimes it'll be that, that, and progress in the Vernon Jones case. Suspect Joseph Paul Franklin, white supremacist, may have killed, like, my theory, there is some collective traumatic amnesia as to why so many black people do not rem, I cannot say enough, the problem is not lack of coverage. I haven't even mentioned black journals. All of them covered this robustly, there's tons of it, more than you could read. That's not the problem. It was on television repeatedly, mentioned right there with the Atlanta child murders. I think there's some sort of collective traumatic amnesia as to why people do not remember all of what happened in nineteen eighty. Notes that I took specifically, let's see. That ending is, wow, I almost want to start right there, let's see, I'll flip back. Do, oh, yeah, do it correctly, go all the way back and get my notes from the beginning. So Bobby Groth, the white fella, got all that at the beginning. It reminded me, speaking of the book club, Gavin DeBecker, The Gift of Fear. It sounds like Bobby Groth, that's what he got, like, there is something off about this dude. He is comparing himself to Jesus Christ. I thought the same thing, like, wow, like Jesus, like, really? White Jesus, really? Fair, malef, or benevolent, fair? Doesn't look like he would hurt anyone, like, oh, my goodness. And now you're Jesus, my goodness, ugh. But gift of fear, when you said, there is something not right about this dude, I'm out of here. I keep mentioning, Grady Lewis, he said he had a two-hour conversation with Peyton Gendron. Gave him his, I've listened to that segment like fifty times. Gave him his keys. You gonna be here tomorrow? What time? We do not understand what it means to be white. Michael Baden, now the people who heard Matt Greider, like, oh, man, unnatural deaths. You should get that book, Michael Baden. I thought she was going to say Michael Baden, medical examiner from New York, perhaps best known as the pathologist who had re-autopsied victims of the nineteen seventy-one Attica prison uprising. No way in the world. Michael Baden is known for the O.J. Simpson trial, period. I suspect, man, you, anybody in the galaxy want to wager? Now, how many people do we think know about Attica prison uprising? Don't know about a Raffael James Simpson. Are you flipping serious? I will take that wager, I'll take that wager all day, every day, even with people that are fifty and up. They know about O.J. Simpson, Attica, what was that? He is most known for O.J. Flipping Simpson, Juice's World, we are just hanging out. And that book, Unnatural Deaths. We already talked about Dr. Baden, you should have that book. Next, that one is kind of difficult to find, might have to go to a college and university library to get it. Even I went there and they didn't have it at the University of Washington. I was speechless. Let's see. Profiling, I thought that was so interesting. They talk about the development of this field in criminal science and policing. Profile, I thought it was so interesting on so many fronts. One, because they said it was just getting its footing right, it didn't have a reputation. Part of this reputation is established with Wayne Williams. In fact, they don't have a whole lot of evidence that Wayne Williams did this, so about the best that they literally can grasp that is straw and the profile. But that is a different book, but that's one. Two, profile, sometimes they don't say white people practice racism. Sometimes they'll say that white people were profiling. I never say that. Like, this book, if anything, that will make sure that I never say it that way to give it even in any sort of air of sophistication and, you know, oh, this is based on some science. Why would, nope, this is just you want to mistreat people on the basis of color, period. Call it profiling. Oh, my God, they mentioned, so Mr. Jones, he goes to the FBI Academy to, excuse me, Mr. Douglas, I'm sorry, I got it messed up. He goes to the FBI Academy to develop the profiling task force. And they said he goes to San Leandro, their academy, to do some of their work. Make sure I read, profiling was an investigative tool investigated in the FBI in nineteen seventy by Howard Teton, a criminology instructor for the National Police Academy in Washington, DC. Prior to joining the Bureau in nineteen sixty-two, Teton was a seasoned police officer in San Leandro, California. Gus T. lived in San Leandro. It is right next to, and I mean right, like, you can walk right into Oakland, right next door. It is affectionately known as Clan Leandro, or at least was many years ago. I guess even before this time, I had some white person who had lived there for many decades give me some of the history of this brand old town. And I guess we call it the East Bay, east side of the East Bay. Go Warriors! Let's see. Let's see. So John Douglas and some of these other folks, they come in to do the profile, set up the motivation of the killer, so what does he say? He says, the motivation behind the killer is obviously to kill blacks. Duh, however, the offender is not satisfied by just the process of killing his victims, he must totally consume, oh, we've read that delectable Negro, absolutely. Now even that, even that, no motivation, no black people had done anything to him unless he's upset, or we don't, people that heard Matt Greider's book, like, is a few, you know, things here and there, but I mean, Jesus, nothing to warrant any of this, no black person made him lose a job, or, you know, stole something from him, or raped a family member, or anything like that, scratched his car, or anything like that, made it so he missed a meal, or something of that nature, like, to have this, all of this, like, come on. Let's see, other cases, oh, I thought there's a, cases reviewed and personally profiled have found other cases throughout the United States where offenders have taken heads, hands, breasts, bloods, blood and genital organs. I asked Matt Greider, do you connect this to the history of Klan violence and castration, Emmett Till, and taking fingers and body parts? So, oh, oh, what? Remember that Memorial Day? I don't, oh, I don't, oh, he was, I don't know, we'll get that one again, put that one in the bag and hold on to that, we'll ask again, and, and, what were the other cases? Because this is like a decade before Jeffrey Dahmer, so what are the other cases that were happening at this time where genitals were being mutilated? I didn't even know, I didn't know, I'm still learning. Put a footnote in there, my goodness, can we get this report in a footnote, like, what? What, what, were these black victims? Still learning, let's see. Douglas provided the background of the offender, he comes as a product of a child of abuse, a broken home, alcoholic parents, one or both, absent of passive, absent or passive father, a possessive mother who may have had incestuous relationships with him as a child. Oedipus Rex, we talked about that, Woody Allen. In school, he was average to above-average in intelligence, however, he never really made the grade, he was, he was, and is passive, introverted and withdrawn, he has a poor self-concept. And I even thought they are like, average and above-average intelligence, like, do we just have dumb white people? Is that possible? We don't, I mean, can you think of any white people that get listed as dumb? They can drop out of school, get a GED, Mark Fuhrman, it doesn't matter. Never do I just hear, this was a dumb white person, a dumb, ignorant, no count white, never, it's all, man, he's smart, quiet, dopey? Let's see. Secondly, he will frequent the cemetery and communicate verbally with his victims and may, in fact, plant items at the cemetery plot to include his victim's heart. Necrophilia is one of the cows' words of the past 13 years, right up there with anachronism. Let's see, oh, I got to get to Zoe at the end, let me see, older and more articulate, see, they don't just say, he's not just smart, he's older and smart and intelligent, they say that you can look up like pretty much all of the killers, the Unabomber, Ted Kaczynski, and all that, smart, intelligent white man. Let's see. I thought all of the conversation about Ernest Jones, when they said it seemed like these guys definitely were not random selections, let me make sure I get exactly how they said, the more investigators learned, however, it looked less and less like, likely that Edwards and Jones had been random victims of a homicidal stranger because Ernest Shorty Jones is a black male rapist, and all the rest, we go through his crimes, and I totally get it, all the listeners who said, like, man, it seems like, especially if you compare it to like Mr. Mills, the white man, innocent white man who was killed, like, wow, these victims sound like, even Glenn Dunn, who's 14, it can't just be, you know, oh, boys will be boys, little tomfool, like, man, these guys are no count criminal crooks, they might be in some sort of numbers racket, gone bad and killed each other, like, who knows? Jeez, like, okay, like, man, oh man, worthless Negroes, all of them, and the worst of the worst. We get to Zoe's story, now she goes to tell of Shorty and his last days. Mr. Jones has the audacity to be with a white woman, now I mean, pause for Dr. Frances Cress Welzing, I so, this book was not published until 2017, so she had transitioned, but I mean, even just if she had known about this case, we could have talked about this with her and all the rest, if she had known these details, she could have talked about this at the Welzing Institute, informed other people about the importance of this case. Man, Dr. Welzing, before she passed, the year before she, the months, weeks before she passed away, she was on this program and she said, I think attacks like Dylan Storm, you are raping our women. She said, I think white people seeing this, and especially white men, this is driving more of these shootings and you'll probably have more of this. That, exa- it sounds like, now I mean, this is conjecture, I'm just reading what we got in the text here, before the shooting sees this guy. Read the text, Zoe related two incidents that occurred in the days immediately before Shorty's death, close to midnight on Friday before he was murdered, Shorty was driving Zoe to work in his cab when a rusty, dark blue van, I even thought that was interesting, because we've had a number of these different sightings, and it was a dark blue car at the funeral, and a van, even with some of these incidents where the cars were driven off the road and that sort of thing? Anyway, but the dark blue van stopped, or rusty dark blue van, stopped alongside them at a traffic light, the van's driver, a white male with light hair, hollered at Shorty, hey nigga, what are you doing with that white girl? I submit Shorty may have been stalked by Mr. Christopher for a while, and he would probably have been doing that for several of these victims, staking them out, catch them at a vulnerable moment, they're not paying attention, oh, he's with a white woman, I definitely got to get this nigger, definitely got to get this nigger. See where he's staying at, go over here and just stalk, sit there and wait. Sit quiet, I'm a white man, nobody will say anything to me, I'll just sit there, few mumbling, nigga, this white, I'm gonna get him, I'm gonna get him, I'm gonna get him. She said, and how many times we've heard this, because I've noted this, I keep bringing this up, this even came up in Lucky, Anthony Broadwater, same thing. Two days later, Zoe was working an overnight shift when somewhere between 3:00 and 4:00 a.m., don't sleep, Mr. Fuller, this is what he said, Mr. Fuller, he said, what it mean to be white? I burn midnight oil, I'm not sleeping. It's 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, I'm up stalking niggers. She noticed a white man sitting at the counter who kept staring at her. She described him as about five feet four, in his 30s, with dirty blonde hair, pale skin, I'm glad they didn't say fair, see, that's what you do, you don't say fair, you just say pale. She stared at her, and he had another white man with him, now I thought that was interesting too, because some people did say, well, did he have an accomplice, did he have help? Blonde man gets upset, evil look when the black male kisses her. 20 minutes later, Shorty gets up to leave, Zoe saw the blonde man look at Shorty, then put his head down and mumble something to Shorty, Shorty walked outside to his cab, and then the blonde man followed him, Zoe saw him saying something to Shorty, who shook his head no, Shorty got in his cab and rolled his window up about three quarters of the way, the blonde man was still talking, and Shorty was still shaking his head no as he drove off. Skip a few minutes after that, another waitress told Zoe that Shorty had just called and said he wouldn't be coming back after all, that he'd see her after she got off work at 8:00 a.m. because he didn't want any trouble to get started at the restaurant, pause right there, Mr. Jones, I'm not out here trying to be some gangbanger and what they talk about retaliation, and I'm a vigilante, and I'm a get white, even if he's up in my face, right, all of this, but nigga, what are you doing with that white woman, you want some of that, and all this, I'm a leave, I'm not even going to come back to pick up my girl, I'm a, you know, you can, you can get it on your own or whatever, I'll see you later. I'm trying to avoid conflict, no, 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 that's why I said, it's not separation, it's not division, because if that's the case, this is all done, that's not what we have, that's not what Dylan Roof did, that's not what Peyton Gindra did, that's not what white people do. I got to stalk Mr. Jones. I stopped in the middle of the paragraph, so he's not going to come back because he didn't want any trouble, he said the guy who had followed him out told him to come up to his room at the Travelodge so he could blow him up. Now even that to me, I said, wow, that is homoerotic, he didn't say blow you, and why do I even need to come up to your room? If you want to kill me, you can just kill me right now, I'll blow you away right now, or let's go over to the side here, nigger, let's duel it out, Ben Tillman style, let's have a duel, I don't have to sneak up on you, let's do it mano a mano, that's what they say, let's do it that way. Now come up to my room so that I can blow him up? Huh? Especially if you remember what we, ooh, if you remember what we talked about in MacGrana, like, whoa, if the full title is The Delectable Negro, Human Consumption and Homoeroticism in U.S. Slave Culture, that's the full title. Top 10 for a reason. Blow him up, the waitress also told Zoe that she had overheard one of the customers tell the blonde man that he looked like the 22 caliber killer, and that he had responded that he was. Now how many times we have not read, I'm going to try to be as precise as I can, we have not even read a third of this book yet. How many times have we heard about a white person bragging about killing black people, even if they haven't done it? But just to be associated, I want that with, connected to my name, I kill niggers. Apparently, if you listen to Matt Greider, that's how he got caught, that was all the way through, that this went on for months maybe, bragging, I kill nigger, he didn't just say I kill niggers, he said, I'm the 22 caliber killer, the guy that they're looking for, cutting out hearts, that's me, and, so now we got a third time, a white witness, third time. I see this guy, he killed Glenn Jones, I see this guy, 14 years old, Madonna Gorney said, I saw this guy, but she forgot. She did tell initially, but she forgot. Kevin Paulson, he didn't forget, the police apparently concluded, this guy's lying, he does not want to identify a white person. Who in the Christ, I'm sitting in a, anywhere, somebody is accused of killing people and cutting their hearts out and/or you have killed four black people, four people, period, they only have to be black people, you've killed, worthless Negroes, they could all be rapists, Shorty Jones, all that, you've killed four people. He brag, you look like this guy, it wasn't just, he said, you look like this guy, that's me? I'm him. How is that not, I know it's not cell phone, it's caveman time, how is that not right now? Call the police, this guy looks like the killer and he said he was, get his, how did, this doesn't come up until after, and the black male has been accosted, he says, come up here and I'll blow him up, how does all that right now? Call the, that right there is all you need to know about black male privilege, how much black lives matter. That's the second time in this book, black male, Harold Green, 32, he was the only black male, not a rapist, I'm not sleeping with white women, I'm not stealing cars, I have a job, engineer at Burger King, no Burger King, but I'm at Burger King just trying to get a meal, and I get my brain, brains blown out by some race soldier, they see smoke, that's what she said, they see smoke coming out of his skull, and, I don't want to get, you okay there, let's go, broad daylight, like I said, I know you don't want to get involved, just call the police, looks like someone might need medical attention, just call the police, that's it. Black male privilege. Shorty Jones. Let's see, and, oh my God, oh my God, now with that, because I'm ignorant, I didn't know about Joseph Paul Franklin, he was targeting black males who were with white women, that was happening at the same time, like, that should have been the press conference too, like, oh yeah, if you are fool enough, ignorant enough at this late date, and you do not understand, code book didn't exist, and we'll give you a little bit of a pass, woo, if you are in any sort of tragic arrangement with a white woman, you are in danger, stay inside, don't go to any restaurant or what have you, if anybody, you have any sort of incident, somebody says something to you, they pull up to you, what have you, get their information, license number, description, what are they wearing, what direction, report it to the police immediately. That is for sure wishful thinking. Did other folks have commentary that they wanted to make sure they got in? The Boeing home explosion took up some extra time, but super important, I thought. Retired firefighter, Bay Area moms, you'll have any commentary to get in, or? Grant, we'll assume folks are. Good for the week, we will be here next time around, next Thursday, 8:00 p.m. Eastern, 5:00 p.m. Pacific, we'll be in chapter seven, and we'll be able to hear some of the audio of the great Jesse Jackson, in addition to the Unity Day Rally in Buffalo. Some things do not change. Neutralizing Workplace Racism Tomorrow, 8:00 p.m. Eastern, 5:00 p.m. Pacific, try to make sense, offer some constructive suggestions. With that said, sobriety would be best, like, man, you have no idea, you could be being stalked by some race soldier for no reason at all, other than they are dedicated to white terrorism. You want to be alert, paying attention, what is going, same thing I say all the time, what is happening around me? Being alert, who is that guy, what's going on, I'm not going to be hanging out late, Dr. Canbone talks about that a lot too, not hanging out late at night and all that, a lot of these folks were out, and some of that was job related, you know, talked about that too, dangers of being out late for jobs, but yeah, try to minimize that as best you can. Wow. Sobriety would be best, if you're out and about, you should be thinking, this absolutely could be Joseph G. Christopher, Peyton Gindron, out hunting black people. If I'm not ready to kill and/or die right now, many black people at this time said, oh yeah, I'm ready to do that, they were prepared, right on. If that's not you, exit. You should be thinking, this person could be armed, Peyton Gindron, they could be prepared right now, if you're not, exit. With a description. If you're in a vehicle, you're sober, buckled up, not on a mobile device, we need all of our attention so we can be very mindful of what is happening around us, very dangerous, and doing our best to minimize contact with race soldiers, badge or no. All of that said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy, we ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in, no name-calling, no gossiping, no reckless production of offspring.